Okay, the safety regulations for our meetings do not allow people to stand. If there's not an open seat, we're gonna have to ask you to go outside. As items, you know, as we work our way through the agenda, there will be people who I'm sure will leave after the item that they're interested in is finished. So we anticipate that seats will open up. But for now, if you don't have a seat, we're gonna have to ask you to clear the auditorium. Okay, we will start with non-agenda public testimony. We have a large number of speakers, so we're gonna limit public speaking to a minute. And depending on how we go, we might need to cut off this portion and then people who want to speak on non-agenda items would do so at the end of the meeting. So I will call folks up. Francisca Salsedo, Jackie Becerra, Hedia Yaminie, Megan Nunez, Spring Schaefer, Jessica Ninest, and Megan Glenn. Please come forward if I called your name. Again, we do need to ask you to clear the auditorium if you don't have a seat. Okay, again, if I called your name to speak, please, please come forward. Did I call your name to speak? Please.
Good evening. My name is Jessica Ninest. I'm a parent of a mainstream student that is attending Foster Elementary. I'm here today to represent and speak on behalf of the mainstream parents. I want to talk about the benefits of having the integration of our children with other children of special needs and moderate disabilities. Our kids have learned and continues to learn acceptance, compassion, and understanding of diversity among not only their peers that they bonded with and love, but others in the community and at the world at large. Awareness has become personal to each individual as the kids are in the forefront of our lives as friends, neighbors, and especially as our classmates. It would be inhumane to separate, actually segregate, the children as a result of closing opportunities of having dialogues and understanding about special needs. With segregation, a door is open and opening a door to intolerance and bullying.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Megan Nunez. And everybody here today wearing the "All Students in Solidarity" shirts are here to protest the consolidation of the special education classes. It appears this time like last time, there was very little research done into which programs should move where. Foster Elementary, for example, has a Hoyer lift, a sensory room, and a private bathroom, which are utilized daily by the students. That special day class is being moved to Marvin, which has none of those. About $1 million was spent just a year ago to put functional living skills equipment into Euclid Elementary. Now that class is being moved from that site. These are not numbers, these are our children. They are part of a community. They're part of a community of children, mainstream children, who know their names, who invite them to birthday parties. To tear them out of those communities, our most vulnerable children, who have a difficult time with transition and from making peer relationships, and put them in a brand-new location where they have no social connections to typically developing peers, is completely contrary to the spirit of inclusion which San Diego Unified is supposed to have embraced.
My name is Megan Glenn. I am the parent of a 3rd grade mod severe student at Foster Elementary. I am here to encourage the district to reconsider the decision to close the mod severe classroom and move the students to Marvin. Foster is better equipped to serve these students than Marvin is, both in facilities, such as the sensory room and restroom with Hoyer lift, but also in intangible things like school culture. School culture can make all the difference between academic success and stagnation for students with special needs, and Foster has a wonderful school culture. Foster doesn't merely tolerate or accommodate its mod severe students, it welcomes them. It embraces them. My child is an important member of the student body at Foster, and San Diego Unified School District is doing all Foster students a disservice by breaking up their peer groups.
If I called your name, please come forward. Otherwise, Francine Maxwell, Kimberly Miller, Olivia Flores, Magdalena Escobedo, Paul Publico.
Francine Maxwell, I'm asking the board trustee to ask questions. Closed session is supposed to be used for litigation and personnel matters. You come and sit on the diocese and you ask not one question. California Special Education Management Information System reporting usually occurs twice a year. Due to a pattern of continued noncompliance, San Diego Unified is required to undergo continuous monitoring and an additional CASMS report. This clearly shows you that the superintendent ignores and continuously has been in noncompliance. At what point are you board trustees? Can we trust? When are you gonna start asking some questions? I implore you, now is the time. Go out of your comfort zone. Stop getting all the answers that you think that you have in the closed session and come and do what your board trustee definition calls for. Real engagement, real dialogue here on the diocese. Ask some questions. When her staff does the presentation, it's a spin.
My name is Maggie Escobedo, and I'm the PTO president of Cesar Chavez Elementary School. We, the PTO and the parents of Chavez Elementary, are presenting you with this signed petition as a protest to the teacher faculty layoffs and pink slips issued on March 15, 2017. We're asking the Board of Education Office Superintendent Cindy Martin to focus on balancing your budget without impacting our teachers, our students, and parents with these drastic layoffs that negatively impact our students and community. You serve 100,000 students in your community, your plans are to provide an excellent education, but with 1,500 fewer employees and $120 million lasting your billion-dollar budget, how do you expect to accomplish that? What will impact the size of our classrooms that are already overcrowded? Will it impact the teacher staff that are already overworked? You're cutting special education that is important to students here at Chavez Elementary. You're cutting physical education with this obesity epidemic that's affecting our elementary schools. You're also cutting the police patrols. How does that impact the safety of our schools? We are located in the middle of South Crest Park in Acacia Grove Way. That's where SPD Officer Jonathan Gonzalez was shot last year. I'm almost done. Schools are expected to operate with fewer teachers, occupational therapists, counselors, head start employees, librarians, and other positions. Who's going to pick up the workload?
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
So, please, think about the layoffs. Si se puede, stop the layoffs. Cesar Chavez.
Hello, my name is Olivia Flores, and I'm a 4th grade teacher at Cesar Chavez Elementary, a school that prides itself in teaching students to protect the rights of others. Today, our teachers and staff are threatened to lose their jobs. The practice of giving quarter of our teachers and staff layoffs notice affects not only our teachers, but the students and communities they work in. The way to avoid these layoffs is to stop new programs and charter schools. Community colleges are already doing a fine job in providing career technical programs. We don't even have the money to provide our children with teachers who teach students the fundamentals. How can we have money to create career technical programs and new charter schools? You cannot deny our students the basics of an education: reading, writing, and math. They are the foundation for success in college or career technical programs. 50 years ago, schools segregated students and labeled some mentally challenged. Today, the school board wants to segregate students in career technical programs. Cesar Chavez would have never said to his organizers, "Individuals deeply dedicated to the cause, I don't need you anymore." In this spirit of Cesar Chavez, the board needs to withdraw the layoffs. Thank you.
Hi guys, my name is Paul Publico, and I'm here on behalf of USA Shade. We are a company that helps provide shade over playgrounds for kids, and we do it all over California. I'm gonna talk about the what, and the how, and the why. And the what is that kids are exposed to ultraviolet rays at a young age, and San Diego Unified doesn't have a ton of these fabric shade structures. The how is how USA Shade can help. We work with LA Unified, San Jose Unified, Carlsbad, Grossmont, Sweetwater, you name it, in California. We've done over 100,000 structures, and they're cost-effective and they keep kids safe. And why you should choose us is because of our reputation and what we've done. I was a former teacher, humbled by the passion in this room tonight, and I think you guys do a great job, and God bless you guys. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Ashley Beaver, Angie Serrano, Karen D. Warragui, Jessica De Warragui, Rosie Bendy, Ricardo Serrano, Dean Broyles, and Billy Sandros.
Hi, my name is Ashley Beaver, and I'm a person with a vulva. This is how our new curriculum encourages teachers to address girls. If you don't think that's sexually objectifying, regardless of intent, I'm not sure if you understand what age appropriateness is. Today, I'm here with 700 others petitioning our board to suspend this new sexual health curriculum because it's too much, too soon, and too fast. This is an adult curriculum for a non-adult brain. It introduces sexual terms and concepts before our kids are ready for them. It encourages them to use the internet to find out more information about sexuality. It starts in Lesson 1 without even giving them protective parameters. We don't teach accelerated math because we know it overwhelms some kids. We should not teach accelerated sex ed. Don't use our kids as guinea pigs with this new curriculum. Later on, define it was too much, too soon, because then it will be too late.
Hi, I'm Angie Serrano. I've been talking to my neighbors here in San Diego via nextdoor.org about the new sex ed curriculum. Many of my neighbors say, "Well, parents can opt out." In fact, a lot of parents are opting out, and that is a problem. Parents are moving their children to other districts, charter schools, private schools, and home schools. Terry, my neighbor, said, "We do not have control over the content of the discussion and have no idea what the teachers in the classroom will teach." I submit that if the curriculum lists anal sex, vaginal sex, and had kind of condom for oral sex for 6th graders, then that is what a teacher will be discussing. Terry's family took out a home equity line of credit to put their kids in private schools. Sadly, parents are fleeing the San Diego public school system in droves, and with them go tax dollars. In light of the $124 million budget deficit, instead of provoking parents to pull kids out of public education, we need to pull out offensive curriculum. Parents want you to suspend this curriculum and call for a selection committee that includes concerned parents choosing transparent, age-appropriate, unbiased, evidence-based, community-accepted, law-compliant sexual health curriculum. Thank you.
My name is Karen Keelian Dijragi. I have three girls in three schools in Miramesa. I am involved at all levels, from the cluster congress into the classroom. I represent parents that feel very strongly that this curriculum is too much, too soon. I represent Asian parents, and Filipino parents, and Hispanic parents, African-American parents, Caucasian parents. We talked to three Muslims outside who were shocked by this curriculum. You represent all of these families. The California Healthy Youth Act knows that parents have the ultimate responsibility in imparting values, values regarding sexuality to their kids. This curriculum does not represent the values of your constituents. But they did not seek out parent involvement when they did this curriculum. One of our concerned parents specifically asked to be involved in this curriculum, and she was denied because her values on sex are not the most aggressive and progressive. This curriculum does not just meet the law, it far exceeds the law. It's openly hostile to parents.
Thank you.
My name is Judy Neufeld Fernandez, and I'm here to ask this school board why you approved a curriculum that introduces children to pornography. Under San Diego Unified School District's adopted curriculum Sexual Health, it has students going to Amaze. The Amaze project takes them to this imagery, which is cartoonized pornography. We have Julie Melons with a well-endowed chest. We have Miles Long. We have Julie and Miles in bed naked. This is adopted by this board. They think your 6th graders are ready for this. How dare you introduce our children to pornography when we know that pornography is connected, according to Summer Stephan of the DA, pornography is connected to child predation.
Thank you.
Shame on you.
Ricardo Serrano, I'm thankful for the opportunity that we have so we together can work on a sound sex health education. I'm going to appeal to your wisdom. You have children, grandchildren, and what you heard is really disturbing. So I'm going to appeal to your wisdom. Think that you are shaping the next generation, and we are entrusting you, our children, so you can teach them, you can shape them, and you can send them into this world. Let's work together. What you heard here, it's so alarming. And also, this proposed curriculum lists things that are unthinkable for an 11-year-old. Again, I'm appealing to your wisdom. Have the courage to put your conscience at ease, and we are mandated to pray for our leaders. We're going to be praying for you so you can have wisdom, and at the end, we're going to have a sound health sex curriculum.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Rosie Bendy. I'm a mother, a grandmother, and a great-grandmother. My granddaughter will be 11 years and one month going into 6th grade. This curriculum is inappropriate for an 11-year-old girl or 11-year-old boy. I don't understand, maybe you guys don't have children, maybe you don't have grandchildren, but this is not appropriate for a 6th grader. As a matter of fact, I don't think it's appropriate for a 7th grader or an 8th grader. So I'm pleading you to please take a look at what you are doing and not push this through.
That's okay. My name is Dean Broyles, I'm a constitutional attorney and serve as the president of the National Center for Law and Policy. I sent the board a letter earlier today. There are two significant legal problems with this sex program. First, it undermines the right of parents to direct the care and upbringing of their children. Second, it demonstrates unlawful hostility towards religion. The Supreme Court has repeatedly recognized the importance of parents and guardians in the fundamental role of inculcating values in their children under their care. I quote, "The child is not the mere creature of the state. Those who nurture him and direct his destiny have the right, coupled with the high duty, to recognize and prepare him for additional obligations." Under California law, parents not the state decide what is age-appropriate for their children. That's why the California Healthy Youth Act gives parents the right to review sex ed materials and decide whether to opt their children out of the program. I quote from the California law, "The legislator recognizes that while parents and guardians overwhelmingly support medically accurate comprehensive sex education, parents and guardians have the ultimate responsibility for imparting values to their children."
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Billy Sandros, and I am a parent and a grandparent. Two questions came to my mind when I heard about this. One was, what is the motivation behind you guys, behind the writers of this? Is there somebody down the line making a profit on this? I think that needs to be asked. The second thing is, by giving children of this age this kind of information, I believe you're setting them up for statutory rape. Because if an 18-year-old would have sex with a 17-year-old, they would go to jail. If a 6th grader has sex with a 6th grader, where are we? I just throw out those two questions.
Thank you. Okay, Larissa Galliana, Janlee Salazar, David Campos Benitez, Esmeralda Campos Benitez, Maite Benitez, and Mario Vialde lead.
Hi, my name is Janelle Salazar. I'm a local of City Heights and a college student attending San Diego State University. Today, I will be speaking about the Fourth Right in our school community rights, which states that students, staff, and administrators have the right to a school structure that supports restorative practices. Restorative practices can only thrive if administrators and educators are given the time, tools, and the staff to execute restorative practices rollout. We need to fund programs that will train administrators, teachers, authorities, and parents to facilitate restorative practices and create a healthy environment for our children and the future of San Diego. We want to thank board members Barrera and Whitehurst Payne for agreeing to meet with us on May 16th, and we urge the board that the school climate bill of rights be passed in its full form by June 6, 2017.
Good evening, board members. My name is David Campos, and I am a 6th grade student at Alferro Community School. I am here to tell you why the school climate bill of rights is important for students. The first right is students, staff, administrators, and parents or guardians have a right to a positive collaborative, healthy, healing school environment. Schools should strive to be sanctuary for students and parents or guardians. Students should want to go to school and feel safe. If teachers have a circle, then it will help them know what's going on with us and help us. If schools use restorative justice instead of suspending or expelling students, can stay in school and learn. I thank the board members for agreeing to meet with us on May 16th for my future and the future of my school and community. I was wishing that the school bill of rights passes before I start 7th grade. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Maite Benitez. I'm a San Diego native, graduated from Morris High School, and received a bachelor's in child and family development from San Diego State University. For two years, I worked as a restorative community conferencing specialist for the RCC pilot program in City Heights. With confidence, knowledge, and experience, I can say that the school climate bill of rights is more than a document. It is one solution to eliminating the school-to-prison pipeline. It is a mindset and lifestyle to humanize the student experience in our school district. It is a guideline to bring about a healing process to our families, schools, and community highly affected by the punitive systems amongst other social justice issues. The Second Right states that parents or guardians have a right to resolve conflict through restorative practices over traditional punitive disciplinary measures. Prioritizing RP over traditional methods affords all students the best possible opportunity to succeed academically and socially. Due to limited time, I hope that this paints a picture on how important this issue truly is. And I thank you for agreeing to meet with us. And at the same time, I urge that you pass the school climate bill of rights in its full form by June 6, 2017.
Good afternoon. My name is Mario Antonio Vialde lead, and I am working right now as a resource counselor, restorative counselor for race and relations and advocacy. It's one of two departments that's actually been cut. We're trying to figure out, I know there's a restorative department that's been created, but we're trying to figure out who's gonna be able to do this work because myself and Tricia Chung, who've been doing this work in the last two or three years, are now gonna possibly be put in classrooms if, you know, having to do post and bid. So I'm trying to figure out, right now, we're doing work at Lincoln High School, Crawford, Hoover, Porta Elementary, and Knox, and we're starting at San Diego High. We're gonna be doing, moving into Madison and other schools, but this is all for next year. I'm trying to see if the district, if the board and the district are going to support this district, support the students, and keeping this going. We all know that restorative practice works. We all know that restorative justice works. It increases kids going to school, it decreases absenteeism, and it decreases kids going to prison. And we need to make sure that you all are gonna support us. Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna call up a few more speakers, and then we're gonna need to move on with the agenda. So Lily Higman, Jennifer Tandy, Carolyn Merlos, Mariana Merlos, Margot Hutchison, Maria Micas, Carolina Bailey.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Tandy, and I'm on the Mission Bay Cluster Board. There are many of us here from the Mission Bay Cluster who are heartbroken, and this is not an exaggeration, over the dozens of pink slips that have been issued to our teachers throughout the cluster. We are an international baccalaureate cluster with Mandarin immersion, science, and music as our pathways for success. The San Diego Unified School District holds our cluster up as the example of grassroots parent action support, site instruction administrative vision, and district resources working together to create upward trends in almost every defined category of success. The Mission Bay Cluster is the embodiment of the district's Vision 2020, a quality neighborhood school, a quality school in every neighborhood. We are here because we must retain our programs on our uniquely qualified people to continue our success. The San Diego Unified School District has made a clear commitment to the Mission Bay Cluster, but the district must recognize that these programs and the successful trajectory of our entire cluster cannot continue without these highly trained professionals. So much time and money has been invested in making the Mission Bay Cluster IB program the powerful game changer that has become, it cannot be dismantled with pink slips.
Hello, Maria Micas, a parent of three children at the elementary schools in Pacific Beach. I'm not gonna speak about the mess we're in, although I will suggest some of you take a Common Core math class so you understand budgets better. But I do want to speak to statistics. I'm gonna speak to the statistics that I pulled off the website from San Diego Unified. All our elementary schools are at capacity or near capacity. PB Middle School is up 100 students each year. At 83% local enrollment, speaking to Cindy's vision about local neighborhood schools, the Mission Bay Cluster is up 10%, while the district is down 23,000 students at 19%. So it's not just the locals raving about IB. In fact, my neighbor just transferred from a private school to Mission Bay High. I want to talk about how we've taken 57 students I want to talk about how we've taken 57 students from outside the district that are coming to our schools for IB at Mission Bay Cluster. So what's the solution? What's my ask, as you're looking at your laptops and hopefully listening? I'm asking that you listen about the specialty teachers that we've invested in, paid for, trained years after year with IB. Now you're ripping them out and putting new people in that we have to train and we have no money, obviously. Thank you. It's about the kids.
Thank you. In the past couple of years, Mission Bay High seniors-
Can we just have your name, please?
Oh, sorry. I'm Margot Hutchison.
Hi, Margaret.
In the past couple of years, Mission Bay High seniors have been accepted into Princeton, Berkeley, and all of the UC schools, NYU, the University of Chicago, and ridiculously competitive programs like Cal Poly Engineering, UCLA Engineering. This is from the director of admissions at MIT. Send us prepared students à la IB. It is the best high school prep curriculum an American school can offer. From the director of admissions at Harvard, IB is well-known to us for excellent preparation. Success in an IB program correlates well with success at Harvard. A study in the UC system showed that students who participated in the IB program earned higher grade point averages and graduated at higher rates than comparison group students. This trend was observed across all income groups. The IB program is the only program that can claim success for students across all demographics and all income groups. We, as a community, have fought hard to bring this kind of college success to our kids. We can't give this to our students if you take away our IB credentialed teachers. This is a K-12 program that serves every kid across every income level and every demographic.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, Lilly Higman with the Mission Bay Cluster as well. As you can see, we've had tremendous success in our cluster because of the IB, the Mandarin Language Program, and we have followed what you have said. Cindy Martin, you have said, "We want to invest in essential programs like IB." Kevin Beiser, you have also said, "Our balanced budget puts students first with programs such as IB." Dr. Mike, you have said, "Acquisition of rural languages and increased understanding of multiple cultures are critical to preparing students for college, careers, and civic engagement in a more globally competitive marketplace." Cindy Martin, you said on KUSI, "We need further access to immersion and dual language programs. Students need to be multilinguals for society and the world of tomorrow." In a recent letter, Cindy, you have said, "Students will also continue to have access to our amazing IB dual language and arts and other vital programs." From a 2015 UT article, you said, "From a program perspective, the district will consider replicating international baccalaureate curriculum for language instruction performing art academies."
Thank you.
This takes more than just the program. It takes people, and we're here fighting for our people who have been well-trained, and we love. This is why we are successful, not because of just the program.
Hi, I'm Hagane Taylor, and I'm a parent of a kindergartner and a second grader. I'm one of those parents who have choiced into the Mission Bay Cluster specifically because there is a dual language immersion program that is a continuing pathway throughout K through 12, including the International Baccalaureate Program. Without these programs, I would not have chosen the cluster, and it's very important that we keep the teachers and the staff that create the program and provide everything that is needed for the program. By taking these teachers away, you're dismantling the program and, in that point, basically ruining the program. I look forward to become a future Buck, and I hope that you guys support that, too.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Carolyn Merlos, and I'm proud to say that my daughter is a student at Pacific Beach Middle School, and she'll be attending Mission Bay High School. A few years ago, I wouldn't have been so proud to say that, but because of the IB program and because of the amazing teachers and staff that we have at these schools, the perception has changed entirely. And one of these teachers in particular, Mr. John O'Donnell, is one of the San Diego Unified School District's Music Teachers of the Year. He is at risk. He has been given a pink slip. The music program is one of those rare opportunities for students from all backgrounds and interests and academic levels to come together for a common purpose. Mr. O'Donnell has helped these students come from the very basics of not having ever picked up an instrument to becoming award-winning ensemble musicians in a matter of a couple of years. These students learn so much about each other and about themselves, and the positive interactions and success that they experience through this program motivates them to do better in all aspects of their academic lives. Please, keep Mr. O'Donnell and our music programs at our schools.
Hello, my name is Mariana Merlos, and I'm currently an eighth grader at PBMS. As a student, I have experiences with many different teachers and subjects every day. I see how my peers are influenced to act and learn in every class with every teaching style. And although students gain something from all academics, there's one class that always stands out in an average child's school day. When a student takes a music class, they're not only opening their mind to a new form of art and culture, but learning a language that is shared internationally. I've been in the Pacific Beach Middle School Advanced Orchestra for two years now and have taken music classes for most of my life. I can honestly say that no other class has given me such a huge sense of teamwork and passion. This, of course, is all due to our wonderful teacher, Mr. John O'Donnell. In our classes, he motivates us to play with feeling and makes each class feel like a family. He teaches us to be professional, to take risks with our music, and to embrace cultures and feelings from around the world. What students gain from music class is important. Not only is playing an instrument proven to raise test scores, but it gives you vital life skills such as teamwork, compromise, and ability to perform and break out of your shell. PBMS thrives because of our IB music program and, more specifically, Mr. O'Donnell, who took the time to become IB-trained so that he can give students like myself experiences that we never have gained anywhere else. I can fully say that he's an inspiration to each and every one of his students, past and present, and PBMS wouldn't be the same without Mr. O'Donnell.
Thank you.
Okay, that concludes this portion of non-agenda public testimony. And folks who wish to address the board and non-agenda items can do so at the conclusion of the rest of the meeting. I'd like to welcome everyone present today and those watching the broadcast and call the April 25th, 2017 regular meeting to order with all board members present. And will please stand for the pledge of allegiance, and we've got the Navy JROTC color guard from Sarah High School to present the colors.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, if you wish to address the board on any of the agenda items before the board today, and your name is not on the speaker list, printed on blue paper located at both entrances to the auditorium, and if you've not already submitted a request for public testimony form, please complete the form and submit it to Ms. Ward, our board action officer. Speakers on agenda items will be called on to speak during the discussion of the agenda item. Once discussion begins on an item, no additional public speaker requests will be accepted by the board. Our bylaws provide a maximum of 20 minutes per consent and/or action item, allowing for a maximum of 10 minutes per opposing viewpoint. Public testimony speakers are limited to a maximum of three minutes per speaker, and depending upon the total number of speaker requests received by the board on an item, the time may be reduced to two or one minute each. The time limit for speakers on today's agenda items will be announced at each item. We'll start with our student presentation from Dingman Elementary School.
Thank you very much, President Barrera. Today, I'm proud to share some of the great things happening in our neighborhood schools. So here we have some of the elementary school students from Dingman Elementary School in Scripps Ranch. Many of you know that Dingman Elementary School is named after Colonel Bob Dingman, known as Mr. Scripps Ranch, who is still with us today and is a very big part of that school. And every year, we celebrate Colonel Bob's birthday at the school with Colonel Bob Dingman Day. So, board, if you please join me in the audience so we can observe these students and some of the great work they're doing in the school.
My name is Carly, and I am in 4th grade at Dingman Elementary School. At Dingman Elementary School, we value the visual and performing arts. Our parents deliver art lessons to classrooms through the Art Corps program. Families are also invited to participate in family art nights. Each spring, we have an Art Corps show featuring our best art of the year. Music is also a big part of our school. 4th and 5th graders can pick a band, a string or band instrument. My teacher, Mr. Segal, directs the honor choir. Some of our 3rd and 4th grade classrooms also learn to play the recorder. We also have classroom choir that gets together weekly to sing. Each fall, 4th and 5th grade seminar classrooms produce a musical. This year, it was Princess What's-Her-Name. Several of our 4th and 5th grade classrooms participate in weekly hip-hop classes and love to perform. Even our kindergartners love to perform. This year, they will star in three different musicals. Our spring fling featured performances by classrooms and individual students, and I will introduce my class. We are going to perform some harmonica pieces for you this evening. In 4th grade social studies, the Gold Rush is one of the eras we study. One of the instruments that the miners liked to play in the 1840s was the harmonica, sometimes called the mouth organ. Mr. Segal's 4th grade seminar class will perform to you two songs. First, "Oh, California," a Gold Rush song played to the tune of "Oh, Susanna," and "You Are My Sunshine," a song written in 1939 that has become part of our country's popular
Okay, great job, Dingman Elementary School. That was a lot of fun. We'll move on to item B4, and this is our third annual EDCO Recycling Challenge Awards. And I think Superintendent Martin will present the awards.
Thank you, President Barrera. This is the third year of these awards under our negotiated contract with EDCO, and I'd like to invite our EDCO partners, Darren Vey and John Vorgias Supervisor. And Darren and John can come up to the podium to help present these awards.
We appreciate having this opportunity to recognize the outstanding winners of the EDCO Recycling Challenge. But before we do that, I wanted to give a quick thank you to Janet Whitehead, our recycling specialist for the district, who does a great job of diverting recycle to trash. So let's give Janet a hand. She didn't know I was going to say that, but I thought I'd give her some recognition. All right, so this year, the challenge was structured to include categories by grade level as well as the most improved category. So John, go ahead and do your part here. Okay, the category, it's with 50% increase from waste diversion, going from 9.9 last year to 24.9. This year, I would like to recognize Terris Sand Elementary School accepting the award and their $250 prize is Principal Sally, mind the name here, Villa Valda. There you go. And Building Services Supervisor Miguel Serrano.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Great picture. In the elementary school category, the runner-up with 42.6% diversion receiving a $500 award is Walker Elementary School. Accepting the award is Justin Phillips, principal and building supervisor T. Juan Holmes. Thank you. Congratulations. And the winner of this middle school category with 32.1% diversion-
The winner of the elementary school category.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry about that. Okay, and the winner of the elementary school category with 42.7% diversion and a $750 award is Encanto Elementary School. Accepting the award is Principal Audrey Madder. Science prep and planet protector student Lynn Howard. Custodian Edgar Hacken. The Levonian Stanley. Student members of the Encantos Pride Protection Team. Everybody gets to be in this picture. Okay. Get them all in there. award, is Sierra High School. Accepting the award is Principal Erica Remfree. Kathy Topete, Senior Custodian Crew Leader. Thanks for wearing your Sierra shirt. That looks good.
Representing.
Yeah. Thank you. And that concludes our presentation. We just really appreciate everybody showing up for this thing. This is important. So, thank you for showing up. We appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you. Dr. McCory?
Yeah, I'd like to add a comment. I had the pleasure to visit the EDCO process. It's an incredible plan, an incredible process. They use high-tech, hard science, and practical mechanical solutions in order to separate, sort, and recycle waste that not only saves money, but it makes money. I want to thank you for your program, thank you for participation, thank you for your collaboration. We're learning something and our students are as well.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. McCory.
I want to thank Steve South and everybody at EDCO for their partnership. A lot of us on the board had a different vision for how our school district would deal with our waste disposal situation. And part of that solution was actually putting into the waste disposal contract-specific targets for making sure that we divert waste into recycle product or composting and things like that. And this award process is a part of that, so thank you very much to EDCO. Thank you to all of the children and the teachers and the support staff and the administrators and the parents that make it happen, because kids are not only doing the right thing for the planet, but they're also learning about how they can make a big difference. So, thank you very much. And congratulations, Patrick Henry and Sierra High School, and Terrace Santa District B represents.
All right. There we go. That's right. Okay, thanks again to EDCO and to all the incredible work that we've seen from our schools. Can we get a motion to adopt today's agenda?
So moved.
Section I, the superintendent's consent agenda.
Second.
Is it considered following? Please vote. Okay, does any board member wish to pull any item from the consent agenda?
Question?
Yes.
I know we're in the time of saving money and trying to enhance our ending balance, and I just want to ensure that these expenditures that we're making right now have been thoroughly vetted. They're absolutely necessary, and essentially, we wouldn't be going forward with them if we hadn't have taken that extra effort to make sure that we absolutely need these items.
Yeah. I'd also like to just comment real quick, that when I go through the superintendent's consent agenda and I see a contract for, you know, $12,000 or something like that, I used to drill down a lot, and now I kind of become much more familiar with the specific expenditures. And I've learned a lot of them are for milk, or apples, or various kinds of things like that, that we absolutely need for our children.
Okay, if we're not removing any items, have we got one speaker?
One speaker on I-35.
On I-35?
I'll move the superintendent's consent agenda, except for the I-35.
Okay. Do we have a second? Okay, please vote. Okay. Okay, report of closed session actions. Do we have any administrative assignments tonight? I'm sorry. We have a report out on closed session.
We do. Thank you, President Barrera. The board voted 5-0 to, I'm sorry, 4-0, to approve litigation to recover unpaid development funds from the county auditor controller.
Thank you. Okay, and we have no administrative assignments tonight?
There are none, President Barrera.
Okay, let's go to our ASB president's report. We have two representatives tonight. We have Ciara Langill, our ASB president at University City High School, and Laura Barton, our ASB president from Mission Bay High School. So, Ciara, why don't we start with you and tell us about what's going on with yourself and at your school, both academically and socially?
Hi, I'm Ciara Langel from University City High School. We've just finished our three-day training with ADL, which stands for the Anti-Defamation League. We had 30 students involved with 10.
Is her speaker, is her microphone on?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so we had 30 students involved with 10 incoming 8th graders who aim to create a safe, caring, and positive atmosphere around our campus. Many of the students who were involved included our ASB members. Our upcoming events include our ASB elections for the 2017 to 2018 school year, as well as our spring showcase, which will be showing our caller guard, who was awarded second in Southern California over the weekend, as well as our drill and all-male dance team, who placed third in Six Flags on Sunday, along also with our award-winning band, our cheer, and other dance teams. Thank you.
Thank you, thanks, Ciara. And Laura?
Good evening. Good evening, my name. Good evening, my name is Laura Barton, and I'm the ASB president at Mission Bay and the president of the San Diego Unified School District of ASB Presidents. Since I was last here, the Council of ASB Presidents have been working on analyzing ASB card sales at each of our schools and looking at best practices to share with each other in order to boost card sales. We also have discussed trauma-enforced practices that we can implement at our schools during times of need. In addition, we have all been contributing to an ASB Google Drive to leave suggestions and information for the ASB presidents for the upcoming school year. At Mission Bay, we've started Karaoke Fridays to boost school spirit. This Friday, we have our spring pep rally that we are combining with our ASB elections for the upcoming school year. Academically, at Mission Bay, all juniors and seniors are getting ready for the international baccalaureate testing that starts next week through the third week of May. Lastly, I would regret if I didn't mention my concern about the effect of the district's budget cuts are having on the culture and environment at Mission Bay High School. Seeing teachers and staff, seeing teachers and staff members having to deal with the uncertainty of having a job or not is upsetting. While my teachers continue to put forth a strong effort, I can see it weighs on them. Seeing meaningful and worthwhile programs that have been built up over the years canceled for the upcoming school year is truly disheartening. And while I understand that there are difficult financial realities, I am disappointed that so many of these cuts are being felt so deeply within the student body and faculty, not only at Mission Bay, but across the district. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Laura and Ciara. And we'll move to our superintendent information report. Superintendent Martin?
Thank you, President Barrera. Just this past week, or two weeks ago, the state of California released the official graduation rates for the class of 2016, and it's something that we'd been talking about in terms of on-track to graduate. But San Diego Unified now, those numbers have been verified by the state, and we ranked first among the top five largest districts in California, ahead of Los Angeles, San Francisco, Long Beach, and Fresno. The state put the final graduation rate number for San Diego Unified at 91.2%, within a percentage point of our own internal estimate of on-track number that we discussed last spring. San Diego Unified students lead the state with the highest graduation rates and the lowest dropout rates of all big-city schools. In fact, our dropout rate is now down to 3.4%, half of what other big-city districts face. But the real story, besides that number, underneath those numbers, is the story about our students. Because while all of our students are thriving, some of the biggest gains, when you unpack those numbers and look more closely, have been among those groups that traditionally have been left behind. And our goal to close the achievement gap is about making differences for students who are traditionally left behind. So I want to point out a little bit deeper, besides the 91.2% rate, African-American students post the biggest gains of any group on A-through-G academic achievement, 10 percentage point gain in college readiness. Our African-American students now have a graduation rate that is 6% above any other big district, and a dropout rate that is lower, dropout rates that are 33% lower. Likewise, our Latino students are also enjoying some of the highest graduation rates in the state of California, and students learning English saw 11 percentage point increase in their graduation rates. That was the largest gain by any population group in San Diego, so congratulations to our English learners for achieving that. I hope the tremendous success of our students will continue to inspire us to do this most important work of serving our students, closing the achievement gap, delivering a broad and challenging curriculum while we make very difficult decisions. We know that none of the decisions that we're facing are easy, but we know that working together, keeping the success of students front and center, is a way that we will continue to achieve and achieve more in years to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Superintendent. Okay, board information reports. Dr. McCory?
Yeah, I would like to acknowledge the partnerships that we have with our community groups, our civic groups, and our other professional organizations here locally and across the state. I just want to highlight a few that I've participated in and acknowledging similarly what has happened at EDCO, and the work that we have with businesses working with our students and schools. I did an audit walk with Carson Elementary. It was an effort to take a look at how we have a safe pathway from home to school and one of the issues around the school. What was collaborative with a number of groups that showed up and participated, we had helpers from National City and Chula Vista, we had the city engineers along with the city police, and we had our teachers and students and support staff there to take a look at the school to make sure that we had taken care of everything in order to have a safe walk. And it was the collaboration that makes a difference with that in other areas. I do want to call attention to our community school officer, whose expertise and knowledge of the process was very, very beneficial in making this successful effort. Also attended a career day at Price, where our local businesses and civic leaders met to discuss jobs and skills and training and their pathway for taking on specific skills and careers in the future. At Cates Sessions, we had our IB project presentations where students did, reported out their programs that they put together, dealing with international issues with a local impact, and they came up with problem solutions with a local action plan. And then I also met with the California School Board Association, as we do, with 12 school board represented across the state, in order to look at the LCAP and the LCFF and our dashboard to ensure that the reports that we are making that are coming from the state are meaningful and provide information, helpful information, for making school improvement at our local schools, so our parents can understand it, our staff can understand it, so that we can move forward. And again, congratulations to our teachers, staff, parents, and school, everyone, for the outstanding outcomes that we had this year.
Thank you, Dr. McCory.
Thank you, President Barrera. Several things. First of all, on Thursday evening, I was thrilled to attend the Environmental Health Coalition Annual Award Ceremony, recognizing various leaders in the community, making sure that our neighborhoods are safe. I'm very proud and honored and humbled to have one of my former students, Karen Fernandez, receive a full-ride scholarship from every Ivy League school in the United States of America. It's my understanding she will be going to Harvard University for free, which is exactly what I told her when she was in my 7th grade math class, when Harvard University announced several years ago that they wanted to try to increase the representation of socio-economically disadvantaged and minority students. And she picked up that challenge, and she continued to work very hard in middle school and high school. I was honored to be her math teacher twice, in 7th grade and again in 9th grade. And congratulations to Karen Fernandez. Friday evening, I joined Billy Bean, the San Diego Gay Men's Chorus and the San Diego Women's Chorus, on the field before the Padres game, and sang the National Anthem at the annual Out at the Park, the LGBTQ Day. And I've got my fantastic hat. Anybody else have one? Yep, yep. Hi, Cat. All right. Many of you may know Billy Bean was the first ever professional baseball player to come out while he was a Padre. He's a great hero to many people. On Saturday, I supported Home Start at their Blue Ribbon Gala, which is a nonprofit organization that fights childhood abuse and helps single mothers to find somewhere to live and for housing. I'm almost done. Hey, you can do it, I can do it. So, also, I also was, attended the San Carlos Public Library Essay Contest, where several students in elementary and middle schools in San Carlos and Del Cerro moved on to the citywide literature. challenging curriculum while we make very difficult decisions. We know that none of the decisions that we're facing are easy, but we know that working together, keeping the success of students front and center, is a way that we will continue to achieve and achieve more in years to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Superintendent. Okay, Board Information Reports. Dr. McCrory?
Yeah, I would like to acknowledge the partnerships that we have with our community groups, our civic groups, and our other professional organizations here locally and across the state. I just want to highlight a few that I've participated in and acknowledging similarly what has happened at Edco and the work that we have with businesses working with our students and schools. I did an audit walk with Carson Elementary. It was an effort to take a look at how we have a safe pathway from home to school and one of the issues around the school. What was collaborative were the number of groups that showed up and participated. We had helpers from National City and Chula Vista. We had the city engineers along with the city police. And we had our teachers and students and support staff there to take a look at the school, to make sure that we had taken care of everything in order to have a safe walk. And it was the collaboration that makes a difference with that in other areas. I do want to call attention to our community school officer, whose expertise and knowledge of the process was very, very beneficial in making this successful effort. Also attended a career day at Price, where our local businesses and civic leaders met to discuss jobs and skills and training and their pathway for taking on specific skills and careers in the future. At Kate Sessions, we had our IB project presentations where students reported out their programs that they put together, dealing with international issues with a local impact. And they came up with problem solutions with a local action plan. And then I also met with the California School Board Association, as we do, with 12 school board represented across the state, in order to look at the LCAP and the LCFF and our dashboard to ensure that the reports that we are making that are coming from the state are meaningful and provide helpful information for making school improvement at our local schools. So our parents can understand it, our staff can understand it, so that we can move forward. And again, congratulations to our teachers, staff, parents, and school, everyone, for the outstanding outcomes that we had this year.
Thank you, Doctor.
Thank you, President Barrera. Several things. First of all, on Thursday evening, I was thrilled to attend the Environmental Health Coalition Annual Award Ceremony, recognizing various leaders in the community, making sure that our neighborhoods are safe. I'm very proud and honored and humbled to have one of my former students, Karen Fernandez, receive a full-ride scholarship from every Ivy League school in the United States of America. It's my understanding she will be going to Harvard University for free, which is exactly what I told her when she was in my seventh-grade math class, when Harvard University announced several years ago that they wanted to try to increase the representation of socio-economically disadvantaged and minority students. And she picked up that challenge and she continued to work very hard in middle school and high school. I was honored to be her math teacher twice, in seventh grade and again in ninth grade. And congratulations to Karen Fernandez. Friday evening, I joined Billy Bean, the San Diego Gay Men's Chorus and the San Diego Women's Chorus, on the field before the Padres game, and sang the National Anthem at the annual Out at the Park, the LGBTQ Day. And I've got my fantastic hat. Anybody else have one? Yep, yep. Hi, Cat. All right. Many of you may know Billy Bean was the first-ever professional baseball player to come out while he was a Padre. He's a great hero to many people. On Saturday, I supported Home Start at their Blue Ribbon Gala, which is a nonprofit organization that fights childhood abuse and helps single mothers to find somewhere to live and for housing. I'm almost done. Hey, you can do it, I can do it. So also, I also was attended the San Carlos Public Library Essay Contest, where several students in elementary and middle schools in San Carlos and Del Cerro moved on to the citywide literacy competition. On Monday after school, I was thrilled to meet with some protesters at my school, to visit with them about the kind of balanced budget that I want to see us finalize in June. One that restores VAPA teachers, that restores elementary school prep time teachers and PE in elementary schools, and one that takes another look at campus safety officers. Just found out today that there are many people that have taken the SERP retirements offer and looking forward to pulling back a lot of those preliminary pink slips. Had a meeting to... I had a couple of interviews today talking about our commitment to keep our children safe. There's been a lot of misunderstanding with regard to what we're doing to keep our Muslim students safe. We don't think this school board... Exactly. Exactly.
I'm sorry, we will not allow that.
We will not allow, in San Diego public schools, for Muslim children to be spit-on, beat-up, verbally harassed, or have their hijabs constantly pulled on in class. We must make sure that San... We must make sure...
I'm sorry, Mr. Beiser. We will clear this auditorium if people are going to interrupt and not be respectful.
Then clear the auditorium.
All right, go ahead.
Hate has no place in San Diego schools. And I want to thank, for the graduation rates, I want to thank our teachers and all the support staff that help provide for our children. Thank you.
I would like to acknowledge the progress of our students and to commend them in conjunction with their teachers, their parents, and all of the other support staff who've helped them to achieve. I also want to thank the community for standing by the schools and offering their help with various programs, such as the Link Achievers Program that I attended on Sunday, where 24 African-American males were mentored and nurtured through an intense program so that they can get through the system regardless to what school they attend as they matriculate into college next year. And then I also attended the Rotary Program. I just wanted to say thank you to all the Rotarians who are out there helping youth with the Leadership Program. And finally, I want to thank the librarian and all the support staff. They have Friends of Library at Malcolm X Library. And on this past Saturday, they gave out awards and certificates to 75 students across the city for their essays in an essay contest. And I want to just commend the community and all of us as citizens of this country for supporting all of our children. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Whitehurst-Pain. Okay, we'll move on to Item E1, our Vision 2020 Quality Schools in Every Neighborhood Update. And this is specifically an update on our efforts to protect and support our immigrant students. Superintendent Martin.
Thank you, President Barrera. I'd like to invite Stanley Angen to join me up here as we present this Vision 2020 Update. It's LCAP Goal Four. We've presented on this goal before, and specifically tonight, we're going to give an update as the Board requested on immigration work that we've been doing since a recent election. LCAP Goal Four is about positive school environments. And when we talk about positive school environment, it's about the climate of the school environment, the culture. And at the center of our work is equity, putting equity at the core and being able to support the whole child. So I'm going to do this presentation with Stan. And as you can see, we're going to load the PowerPoint. And I'll let you... Let me get the first one up. No, you can do it for me. I'll tell you when. I'll do the first few and then I'll pass it over to you. Are you loading the PowerPoint, Ms. Ward? As I load the PowerPoint, I just want to set the stage that over 50,000 students in San Diego Unified speak a language that's other than English at home. And 10 percent of all of our students are foreign-born. That being said, San Diego Unified clearly serves tens of thousands of first and second-generation immigrant families, and we're proud of our families and our diversity. Because San Diego Unified is a strength-based district... We can go to the next slide. We're a strength-based district. We believe in unlocking the genius and seeing the values that each student brings from their language, from their culture, and from their background, and focusing on their strengths as a tremendous asset. That helps us recognize that language and cultural diversity are important strengths, and immigrant students bring these strengths with them when they come to our schools. From 61 countries, 171 different languages, that we're proud to welcome these students into our schools. Just as immigrant students contribute to our success as a district, we're focused on their success, and we've organized ourselves internally to accomplish the work. For example, the Office of Language Acquisition is part of our instructional cabinet, working collaboratively with our Secondary Office and Leadership and Learning. And our English Language Learner Resource Teachers work to train school-based teachers to align the lesson plans with Common Core and English Language Development Standards that is an integrated approach. We will not close the achievement gap unless we integrate these services across the district. Slide five... Are you on five? Slide five. These strategies that we've put together are definitely paying off. This slide shows just some of the ways we're getting results. I want to highlight the fact that I just recognized earlier, our graduation rate for students reclassified before the eighth grade is now 96 percent higher than the general In terms of positive school environment and culture, another way that we align the goals is we've seen success that we've... The success that we've seen in the graduation rates and the academic achievement can actually be under threat. Because what we know is that students can't learn when they feel threatened, when they feel scared, when they're worried. And given the current national political climate, who could blame our immigrant students for feeling afraid? We want to be sure that we can ensure positive school environments across our schools. So I'm proud, in Slide seven, I'm proud of the Board, the action and the leadership that this Board has shown. On December 12, 2016, when you passed the resolution reaffirming the rights of all of our students to a public education, the action, April 25, your resolution tonight that you'll be passing, you're showing strong leadership to transmit to our students and our families that our schools are safe places for all students to learn, to achieve, and to reach And just today, we saw a victory in the Santa Clara versus Trump case protecting sanctuary cities from retribution by the federal government. A federal judge just today issued an injunction to stop that from happening. Our district was on the right side of history when we filed our amicus brief in that case. And you can see going forward that based on the Board's actions that we've taken, we're able to make those decisions. Now I'd like to introduce Stan Angen, our Family and Community Engagement Director, to talk about how we support immigrant students and families to lead across our system.
Thank you. As a response to the many concerns that we received from a variety of families and students, our schools, and reminding us that our schools have an obligation to ensure safe and supportive school environments for all students, we launched a collaborative effort with a variety of school partners, parent leaders, which include the San Diego PTA, ADL, the Mexican Consulate, the Center, STEA, AASD, Alliance San Diego, PLESTER Congress, and many more, actually achieving over 40 different community partnerships to bring to the district a celebration of life, which was a remembrance of the diversity and the many faces that we represent as a school district. The Family and Community Engagement was extremely excited to launch this event, and throughout the course of the event, we easily achieved over 500 participants, making it one of the largest events the district has held, to support and remind us that we are here for all children. From the first event in December, the San Diego Unified Family and Community Engagement Team has been leading some district-wide work in these issues in collaboration with many other partners, one of them being USD, where we held the SDUSD Educator Symposium on school safety and climate, in which we had our Equity Ambassadors in attendance. And as student panelists, they were able to share their voice, as well as share their fears of the school climates in which they were in. We just recently also, in partnership with USD, were participants in the Restoring Respect Conference, in which we had not only our Equity Ambassadors, but also our student representatives here, who, in conjunction and in partnership with our Equity Ambassadors, shared not only issues around equity and access, but also safety as it pertains to harassment and bullying, and their beliefs around how we need to move forward to ensure that students are safe at all times. And this year, we launched the Equity Coalition, which is a collaborative of stakeholders, district staff members, as well as student leaders, who come together on a... Bimonth... On a... I'm sorry. Every other month to address these equity issues, so that they are at the forefront of the conversations in which we are leading our work, and always in remembrance that we do this work from the voice of our children. So now, the Family and Community Engagement Team is taking this work on campuses to serve students and families directly. We've opened eight neighborhood centers this year, all with the ability to bring community partners and agencies onto those campuses to provide resources and services to families. We've established and maintained key partnerships that include the Mexican Consulate, Immigration Forum, Alliance San Diego, Casa Cornelia, ACLU, IRC, Say San Diego, and many, many more. We've partnered with San Diego Community College District and their Outreach Department to ensure that we are providing the right resources and services to our AB540, our California Dream Act, students, and that we have... And that they have access for furthering their educational endeavors. We've also centralized a Center for International Families and Students, formerly the DAC Office at Ballard Center, allowing it to be a space for information and access and resource to our families and students. As well as the Family and Community Engagement Department and the San Diego Unified School District Police Department has established some strong communication and information-sharing with ICE to ensure that we have relevant current information that will impact the many families that we service. So in the many work and the work that we've lifted this year, we have held community forums, all being driven by community members giving us the topics. And the majority of those have been around immigration and citizenship. So with the 16... With the over 16 immigration forums that we've held across San Diego Unified, we've had over 2,000 parents and students come through in need of support, resources, and information, as well as staff members coming through for support information for others. Planning our future, so we are currently committed to working with and partnering with the Mexican Consulate to support our undocumented students and families and ensuring that they have the right resources and services needed. With this new partnership, we've learned that Baja Public Schools is currently educating 55,404 US-born American citizens in grades K through nine. There are approximately over 2,000 students who are American-born have returned to Baja Public School System since January of this year. Baja Schools also estimates that over 500 newly enrolled students, grades 7 through nine, are Mexican nationals but have never enrolled in a Mexican school institution. So there are higher numbers of students enrolling in the Baja School System currently that are actually US-born American citizens than the Mexican-born students. And so with this information, we are working to collaborate on ensuring that our students from San Diego Unified who have left and/or enrolled in another school district or country in this matter, continue to have the right supports. And so we will... We are currently in the process of creating a strong plan of support for students.
Thank you, Stan. So let me emphasize the work that this Board has done in Board Direction to take action and to ensure that our students feel safe and that they're well-loved and that the nurturing environments are there so kids can learn. Staff's job has been to implement the Board actions, and we wanted to update you tonight on the actions that you've taken until now. Some of them have been... This has actually been several departments, and for staff to figure out who's going to present, we had our legal department working on this, of course, Family and Community Engagement, the Curriculum Department, actually many departments are working to ensure the Board's wishes, to be able to make sure that the learning environments around all of our campuses meet LCAP Goal Four, which is safe and inclusive environments for all students. And we wanted to update you tonight specifically on immigrant students. And each Board meeting, when we do an LCAP Goal Four, there's many different facets to this goal. And tonight, you heard specifically what we have done, are doing, and intend to continue to do, to make sure students know that they can come to school, they'll be welcomed, and they can learn in a safe environment without being fearful of being harassed or bullied.
Thank you, Stan and Superintendent Martin. We've got several public speakers. Could we please remove this person? You are out of order, sir.
No, I'm not. I have to put a motion on the floor. I assume...
This is not a town meeting. This is a Board meeting. It's running in a purposeful way. You are out of order. The Chair has asked for you to be dismissed. Please abide by that. You are out of order, sir.
Living speed, why hear it?
We've got several public speakers on this item, and if you continue to disrupt this meeting, we will ask you to leave.
You don't want to hear my voice.
You can sign up as a speaker. I'm going to call up Anna Bonatati, Elaine Sabeti, Celeste Barbara Kozaki, Francine Maxwell, Jeffrey Bennett, and Andrew Amorau. And we'll give you each two minutes. Go ahead, Elaine.
Hi, I'm Elaine Sabeti. I'm a library technician at Pershing Middle School. I'm so pleased to hear you say that cultural diversity is important to you. I'm pleased to read today that you are interested in knowing that relevant and current information, materials related to Muslim culture and history are in our library and media centers. We welcome any influx of materials, resources for our diverse students to learn about all cultures and all religions. And we don't want you to worry at all about safe spaces. We don't want you to worry about creating safe spaces for our Muslim children or for any of our children. You see, we already have safe spaces on our campuses. We have safe spaces for all of our children. Walk into my library, into our library, any day of the week during lunch, and you will see students of all faiths, cultures, diverse backgrounds, happily interacting with one another in a safe learning environment. You'll see our GSA Club. You'll see our LGBTQIA students hanging out in the one place they know they're safe and welcomed, because all of our students know that they are safe and welcomed in our school library, in their school library.
Thank you.
I'm wondering how you can even present much of the information on this goal without feeling complete shame. I'm wondering how any school can maintain a positive school environment when many staff members are losing their positions or believe that they will. I'm wondering how schools will be safe and clean when many custodians are being laid off. I'm wondering how many schools will feel safe when among the 450 par is being laid off, there are security officers and health techs, and in addition to 22 police officers. I'm wondering how equity at the core is the focus when schools south of the eight are being hurt the hardest with teacher layoffs. I'm wondering how any part of LCAP Goal Number Four can be met without the staff to do it. Again, your actions are in contradiction of your propaganda. Again, your actions are in contradiction of your propaganda. When you say you are going to do something and you don't do it, it's a lie. You are lying to the public.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The school board superintendent, Cindy Martin. My name is Celeste Barbara Ozaki, the president of San Diego Unified Council of PTAs. I would like to read to you the letter that I issued to you earlier today. It's co-written with President-elect Bernard. We are writing on behalf of San Diego Unified Council of PTAs to reiterate the PTA's legacy of inclusivity and tolerance. The mission of the PTA is to make every child's potential a reality by engaging and empowering families and communities to advocate for all children. Our slogan is "Every Child, One Voice." Our values: our collaboration, commitment, accountability, respect, inclusivity, and integrity. We are guided by the standards of PTA, more specifically, the National PTA and its unit council, district, and state's PTA, welcoming to membership people representing a diversity of culture, ethnic backgrounds, and political or religious beliefs. Creed, color, race, economic status are irrelevant to qualification for membership. PTA should be hospitable to all, supporting no one religion over another, and according each faith, equal respect and consideration. We are aware of concerns from community regarding the curriculum being to do as related to Islam, LGBTQIA, immigration, and others. We would like you to believe that the goal of talking about Islam, or Judaism, or LGBTQ, or undocumented immigrants during the instructional time is not to teach religion, or sexual behavior, or promote political agendas, but to enhance the understanding of others and encourage dialogue, and through education, to develop a culture of acceptance and maintain school as a safe place for all children. Finally, we would like to also remind our communities that PTA is a non-parian, non-political, non-secular organization, where our sole focus is on well-being of the whole child of all children.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, board members. My name is Andrew Amorau. I'm with Alliance San Diego, and I've had the honor to be working with Stan and his staff with FACE in the community on a series of Know Your Rights immigration forums. And so, it's been a pleasure working with his staff and being able to provide services and much-needed resources to the immigrant community. I'm here today because I'm in support of the Muslim advocacy initiative that you all had passed. I think it's important that this particular district had shown the leadership, had shown that they can move swiftly on these issues, because it is a problem for a lot of communities, especially Muslim students, who are attending schools and being bullied. And so, we just wanted to stand in solidarity with you and make sure that you understand that hate doesn't have a place in schools. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Francine Maxwell, I truly believe that every child should be feeling safe. Rather, you just got to San Diego from Uganda, rather you just got to San Diego from Ethiopia. The LCAP Goal says "Support for the Whole Child." When you try to separate us, when you try to consistently, as a board on the diocese, single someone out, it doesn't do us good on our journey as we're moving forward trying to unite. Faces is a department that is the new flavor of the month. There is no reason for Faces to be here at San Diego Unified, costing us all the money that it's costing us. We have departments that you have eliminated that have trained Faces, so now you're going to try to get to train the trainer. Yes, we love our community partners. Yes, we love unity and moving, and we're working with outside organizations. But you guys keep supporting the superintendent in her flavor of the month, spare of the moment. Hoorahs! Come on! It's time for you guys to get serious. Get serious with this budget cut. We don't need quality assurance. We don't need Faces. Give us some real cuts, so that we can move forward as a district. I'm all in favor of receivership. Receivership is the flavor of the month that I'm excited for. That means that we would cut everybody on this diocese. We would get back to basics. You don't deserve to be there anymore, because you have sold us out. You are committed to adults, you're committed to yourselves, you're not committed to children. Children's First is just a slogan to you. I just can't take it anymore. We need to have some real honest conversations here tonight. We have come out, week after week, for these board meetings. You guys don't ask each other hard questions. I've said it before in my public statement, I just can't take it anymore. You need to ask. We got rid of the Welcome Center. Oh, now we need a neighborhood center. Come on. You're letting her pull acronyms out of the sky.
My name is Jeffrey Bennett, and I'm a parent at Gage Elementary School. I serve on the school site council, our cluster council, and the district advisory council, where I'm also the second vice chair of our executive board with the district advisory council. Stan, it's good to see you, and I appreciate the effort your department has made to come and engage us at the district advisory council. That's the type of leadership that we like, but on the LCAP 4, I am really concerned that we're picking specific groups to promote when we're looking at the whole community and the schools. Specifically, 4.1 talks about the emotional needs counseling, guidance, and behavioral support for our students. Yet, when the DAC suggested adjustments to the Title I formula for funding, because some students who need additional counseling and other services, at some schools were getting about a quarter what they are at other schools, even if the same populations, but different percentages, that was rejected by the board. So how do those students, with similar populations, get that? Then, if you look to the next one is 4.2. It talks about special education, and how in the health services, that they should provide support. And in the 2020 Vision for Community Schools, if you're moving them out of their community, how are you providing that in the 4.2? And then, in the 4.5, it talks about a staff, a staff that is inviting and welcoming. Yet, the staff members that are involved in critical programs in our neighborhood schools, the ones that make our schools unique and important, with this transition of the staff to the district centers for the elementary prep teachers, where we have enrichment programs, now, even if they come back, even if, as Mr. Viser said, he'd like, trustee visor, like to bring that back there, now they're controlled by the district, and we might not have the people who our kids are working with or the programs, because it's now not at the school level. I really encourage you to look at all the LCAP elements when making your decisions and doing that, because we need to look at things as a whole.
Thank you. Dr. Evans?
Yeah, I want to thank the superintendent for the report, and I think it's important that we look at results, and we're looking at results for all students. And I think you went over it a little quickly, but I think it was really important about the graduation rate, which is the overall graduation rate of San Diego Unified, which is 91.2. And we've had a lot of criticisms and questions about it. How is that possible? How is it possible with an urban district with such a diverse population could produce this level of graduation? And I've said to others before, I'm reminded of the movie that some of you may have seen, Stand and Deliver, which is about a calculus teacher, Jaime Escalante, in East Los Angeles. His students performed very well on the AP Calculus test, and they sent in investigations because they were asking, how could those kids perform at that level? They must have cheated. And that's what we've seen when we produced the 91% graduation rate, is people have asked, how could these kids in our district have produced these results? And they, in fact, did. And what's important, we look at various groups, we look at all the students, we also look at groups, and the African-American group has increased significantly, the Latinos have increased significantly. But one thing that you went over very quickly was about reclassified students. And I don't think everybody necessarily knows what a reclassified student is. But we're talking in here about immigrants, immigrants who have come into our community. We have many, many students who come into our schools without speaking any English. And what we found in this report is that those students that came into school at some point without speaking English actually performed higher and graduated at a higher rate than the rest of the students. I mean, if this is not an indication of what our immigrant students are capable of, I don't know what else is. So I think it's just-- I think it's really important that we have the teachers and the support and everything. This is what's created. We have really changed what we're doing in the high schools. We're changing at all levels. But it's really important that we recognize the strong achievement of our immigrant students, and that's part of what this report is.
Thanks. Any other board, Dr. Whitehurst, no? Any other board questions or comments? Okay, Dr. McCorr.
Yeah, excellent report. It's good hearing from you. It's also good seeing you. It's important when we see FACE in the community, and I've seen you work and members of your staff work with us on a number of activities and projects, and I want to thank you for that. We have students who are born in 163 different countries. That's how diverse they are. This is not students who have relatives or have an ancient connection, like I do, to Scotland. These are children who are actually born in another country. So 162 different countries outside of the United States, which is how diverse of a student population we have. I used to think we had 70 different languages. Tonight, I heard we have 171 different languages that students bring with them. And then, we see the outcomes that we get. We cannot have a high graduation rates unless we have a high graduation rates for all groups. And that means we need to accept and understand and celebrate the diversity of the students that we bring here and the families who live here. It's important work that we're doing, it's important work that you're doing, it's important work that we've identified in this LCAP. It is critical that we provide the wraparound support services that make a difference. Yes, the teacher in the classroom does have the most important impact, but we also know we have to have outstanding leadership at that school, we need to have outstanding support, wraparound services, counseling, health, and nursing. We need to have the custodial staff, the classified staff, the people who provide the supports that make the school operate. It is a team effort. We're working together as a team to acknowledge the diversity we have, to accept the power that we have in unity, and moving forward, we will continue to have outstanding growth. And I want to thank you and your staff and your department for doing it, and thank you for setting this as a high priority. And we know that our LCAP goals identify where we spend our money. And so, we've been doing the LCAP for this, our third year going on four years. We want to find out what we're spending our money on. The money is spent on what is identified in the LCAP. The LCAP is put together by community involvement and community input, and it's then codified at the district level, and then sent to the state to show that this is how, these are our priorities, is how we're going to spend our money. And then, we have a comprehensive auditing process. So we're spending the money to get outcomes, we're getting outcomes that are based upon our needs. Our needs are identified by our local communities, and our local communities run these schools. Thank you.
Yes. It says it. Over 50,000 of our students speak a language other than English at home. That's like one in two? I mean, one half?
I'm going to try to answer that, because I didn't-- Could you, what was the question again? I'm sorry.
It says, "Over 50,000 students speak a language other than English at home." That's like the half of our students?
That is correct, yes. So, our department is also in charge of managing the over 110,000 parent surveys that have been distributed to our school district over the last few weeks. The current survey that we have is only addressing 26 of those languages, but in the data polling, to be able to ensure that the survey is given to the right family member, based on their home language, we are currently servicing that number, which is that over 50,000 students speak a language other than English at home, which is, yes, just over half, sorry.
I want to thank the FACE Department and also Superintendent Cindy Martin for the presentation on LCAP Goal 4, which is basically to make sure that all of our students are safe. And I particularly want to call out and thank the Anti-Defamation League, which is a Jewish organization that helps focus on a program called "No Place for Hate." So it's through this partnership with the Anti-Defamation League that we work to help our students lead the way in creating safe schools for all of our children, whether it is discrimination, or bullying, or hate, or any of those categories that we know are not appropriate and not welcome in our schools. When I look at the United States Olympic team, I see a country that comes out during opening ceremonies that is diverse. The United States Olympic team is very, very diverse, and that's what America is about. The United States of America is a country where lots of people have come together. My family's heritage comes from different countries, and that's what makes the United States what it is. So, President Barrera--
Yeah.
--would you please bring order to the meeting?
Yeah, we really are going to have to ask people to be respectful. When anybody is speaking, whether it's a public speaker or a board member, we have to allow that person to be heard. And so, again, I ask that people be respectful, and if we can't be respectful, then we're going to have to clear the auditorium.
Thank you, President Barrera. There's a lot of interesting things that have been said about the action that this board took, because we had a problem. We have a problem. We have several students in San Diego that happen to be Muslim. 55% of them report bullying, being bullied, different degrees. Some are spit on, and that's not okay. Some are getting their hijabs pulled in class while the students are trying to learn. That's not okay. Some of those students are being beat up. That's not okay. And so, that's one of the reasons why this school board took action to establish and clearly articulate the expectation that no student should be bullied. No student should be bullied for any reason. And so, as a part of that program, we have made sure, through the superintendent's recommendation, that we're going to try to do a better job at helping to enhance our curriculum, so that when we teach about, in history class, we teach about Buddhism, we teach about Taoism, we teach about Christianity, and we also teach about Islam. And so, we're going to make sure that we're complying with California state law in terms of the diverse curriculum guidelines that are put forth in our state. We're also going to make sure that our schools are safe places for all of our children, including students that may be Muslim. And so, it's through this effort that I think that we're doing the right thing for kids and helping them to have a place where they cannot worry about their safety, but they can worry about learning and achieving and contributing back to our society. So I think that's very important, and I want to thank you. And one thing that I think is really important, I really want to appreciate Celeste Barbara Ozaki, president of the San Diego Unified Council of PTAs, when she so eloquently articulated that we will continue, we are, and we will continue to be a secular school district, but we will continue to be a school district that values all of our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barrera. Okay, well, that was an information item. So with no further board questions or comments, thank you again, Stan, for your excellent work, presentation.
I'll move item F, the Board Consent Agenda.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? Oh, we do have one speaker on item F5, Anna Bonatati.
So I appreciate the resolution for Day of the Teacher on May 9, I think it is, but given the timing and what's going on, I just wanted to express how, as a teacher, that really feels kind of like a slap in the face at the same time, because of how many teachers are worried about their jobs for next year, and it's kind of ludicrous at the same time as we're celebrating what great things that we do in the classroom, and I take pride in that, but at the same time, I feel kind of sick, because I really don't feel like the board and the ed center really value what teachers really do. And even though you say it, it doesn't feel like the actions are very often there. Many decisions come from the top down. Many decisions come from the top down. We're giving -- you know, it's sad, because I've been a teacher for 20 years now, and I love teaching, and I, you know I love immigrant kids, because I'm always here talking about English learners. But what you do here at this board meeting and talk and talk and talk and talk, and then the actions that actually take place where us little people are living do not reflect what's on these, on your documents and coming out of your mouths. It's not what's really happening. And I can tell you that teachers, and I'm not, I can only speak for myself, but I was talking to teachers today and talking to my friends, and we feel demoralized. Teaching has become a demoralizing, a demoralized career. If somebody asked me if they were going to want to become a teacher, I would tell them, "Don't do it," and if you do, "Don't teach in San Diego Unified," because you really don't value us. You don't. You make decisions that impact students and teachers without really giving any, actually even listening to them. We had the SCIF Committee. They met. They came up with great ideas, and I just asked somebody on that committee, and she's like, "I don't know what happened." Poof, it disappears. You checked off your box. Yes, we got collaboration. Yes, we got parent input. Yes, we got teacher input. But you don't listen to it. You listen to each other. You pat each other on the back, and you congratulate each other, and then you go home, and then we go home and we feel like, "What's the point?" Deaf ears. It just falls on deaf ears. That's what I feel like. So I'm glad that you're going to recognize us and the other people that you're laying off, that you're going to recognize them too, but it seems pretty ludicrous.
Okay, we have a motion in a second on the Board Consent Agenda. Please vote. Okay. Okay, we'll move on to Item G1, Agreements with Multiple Bargaining Units Regarding Impacts and Effects of Reduction in Force. Superintendent Martin.
Thank you. This item is about, we met with SDEA and AASD-certificated and classified bargaining units regarding the impacts and effects of the reduction in force for their respective bargaining units. So what you have before you today is, after we met and negotiated in good faith, the district reached an agreement with each of the three bargaining units, and this item is the agreement that we've reached with those three units.
Okay, do we have a motion on this item?
Move for approval.
Any discussion?
Did the, did the three bargaining units ratify this agreement yet?
Yes. Did they? No? Not necessarily, not necessarily to be ratified.
Okay. Okay, so--
It's impacts and effects, pardon.
Okay, so it's not something that is ratified by the unit members?
No, right? It's not ratified because--
It's not ratified. It's not something that is ratified.
It's not required to be ratified.
Right, I understand. Okay. But the three bargaining units, all, their leadership agreed to these impacts and effects?
Yes.
Okay. We do have one speaker on this item, but I didn't know if you wanted to speak to this item or to the item on the classified layoffs. This is Doreen Diaz-Pesta. She want to speak now? Okay.
Doreen Diaz-Pesta, I was going to speak on the impacts and effects, and I would like to speak on the other one, but unfortunately I cannot. But what I do want to tell you is, we have been here before. When it's broke, we don't copy it. Everybody up here is educated. You've all been studying this information, and we've been making progress. African-American boys and girls are making progress, so we're going to dismantle everything. So my point to you is on the impact and effect. What about the impact and effect on all of us who voted for you when you gave us promises? Where's the impact and effects of that? You sat there, all of, many of you, and you said you would support classified in teachers and students in education, and you're not. In the early 90s, the Revere Center was closed down as they started hurting all the special ed kids into one school until we got sued, and then we had to integrate students into schools. Tom Hears report, how much money was spent flying people from Massachusetts to California to do these reports, and you didn't listen to anything? How many times do we do surveys, and you don't listen? You're just wasting our money. There should not be this money that you're spending on reports. It should be going to students, to classified people, to teachers. It takes a village, yes, but the impact and effect of dismantling all these villages when we're trying to serve the whole child from when you step on the bus till you get home, we're trying to feed them, take care of their safety, take care of their health, which includes their mental health, how are these impacts going to change them? I really wish you would think about the impacts of these kids, because I don't believe you are. We've been here. We've been here, and you know the result. Our test scores will go down. Our enrollment's going to go down. Our attendance is going to go down, and lo and behold, we have less money for ADA, and we have less money coming from the state. We've been here. Why are you repeating this? We need to find other solutions, like let's not take a department, change its name, and give everybody 10,000 pay raises because they changed their job description name. That would save us money. Let's get rid of these area superintendents. That would save us money. Let's, yes, let's take this Ed Center, person by person, administrator by administrator, and see who is crucial, who could be sitting in front of a computer and doing that job for a lot less money. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, we have a motion in a second on Item G1. Please vote. Okay, Item G2, this is a resolution in support of State Bill 30.
Before you move on, I just want to make a comment.
Yep.
Just for information, that the Central Office Services, they did take a look at who was doing what, where, and to what degree, and they have recommending 355 cuts, that amount to $61 million. So we have taken a look at what we're doing, and we are making a difference, and we are, and we still listen and listen to your input and respond to it.
Okay, thank you, Dr. McCrory. Okay, Item G2 is a resolution in support of State Bill 30, which would prohibit public contracting with any person who is providing goods or services to the federal government for construction of a federally funded wall, fence, or other barrier along California's southern border.
I'd like to move Item G2, please.
Okay, and do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. We have three speakers on this item. I guess we have a few more. Six speakers, so we'll allow two minutes apiece. Lorraine Burley, John Moore, Luis Villanueva, Jeff Schwick, Michael Richardson, and Robert Lowton. Please come forward.
Yes. Good evening. My name is Lorraine Burley, and my contact information is on file. I was reading through this agenda item, and I noticed that you're defining responsible bidders. How can the Monarch Development Group be considered a responsible bidder for partnership with this district on the joint occupancy project for the apartment building in Scripps Ranch? Ryan Stone is listed as a development partner in the Monarch RFP response, and in Ryan Stone's court settlement with the California Gambling Commission, Ryan Stone admitted to failure to make full and true disclosure of information necessary, didn't disclose agreements regarding financing and ownership arrangements, and made illegal loans to cardroom owners in Chila Vista, who by the way, are under indictment for money laundering, participation in illegal management of the cardroom. So the definition of fraud is wrongful or deception with the intent to result in financial or personal gain. So how is it that this, this board supports Monarch Development Group and the proposed term sheet with greater potential for legal challenges in the amount of bond money that you propose to spend, and the current environmental impacts, and the public contract code violations, and the constant denied and delayed Public Record Act requests that you have produced to the voice of Scripps Ranch, which is a coalition of members fighting against this proposal? This board should cancel the term sheet agreement with Monarch Development Group due to the senior partner fraud. They do not qualify as a responsible bidder according to the definition in the California Code. And I'm just going to add that this bond project to advance this joint occupancy with Monarch Development Group to build the four-story apartments on Scripps Ranch, which currently is the site of the Innovation Academy Charter School, is a highly questionable, very bad capital bond project. It does not benefit students, does not benefit schools, or the surrounding community.
Thank you.
And I've identified this to the ICOC, and hopefully it will be included in the yearly audit.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
My name is Michael Richardson. I'm a native of San Diego County, 76 years, alumni of San Diego State. I understand that you plan to take a position against the wall, but wait a minute, don't we already have a wall? San Diego, most of San Diego County has a wall. In fact, I think a large part of it has two walls, and some of it has three walls. So what is it that you're trying to accomplish? You want to, you want to deny other areas a wall also? Is that what you're hoping for? I submit to you that the only reason you're doing this is political, that your, your, your goal is to discredit and embarrass our president, and that is wrong. That is, that is dead wrong, and I think you should drop it and forget it.
Thank you for this opportunity. My name is John Moore. I'm a resident of San Diego. I'm a retired programmer, aerospace worker, and network engineer. Our porous border allows criminals and terrorists from various nations south of the border and parts of the Middle East to illegally enter the United States. Mexico and other Central American countries have deliberately released criminals, only to later arrive in the United States through our unfinished southern barrier and commit murder, rapes, and robberies against U.S. citizens. Immigration and Customs Enforcement officials confirmed that 121 homicides were committed in the U.S. between 2010 and 2014 by illegals who had already been convicted and released back into society. The Supreme Court has prohibited detention of deportable foreign nationals beyond six months. Yemen and Somalia are poor and backwards Islamic countries that have little or no records on their citizens. Their refugees stream through our physical and political barriers with only the word of the individual refugee available for vetting. It is impossible to tell who is a criminal or terrorist when the refugee is functionally unvettable. Minnesota, in the last few years, accepted Somali refugees with no medical records. During the first five years, between 2010 and 2014, 81% of the state's active TB cases, 593, were foreign-born. Of the foreign-born cases, 50% were refugees, according to the epidemiology of tuberculosis in Minnesota, published by the Minnesota Department of Health. The incurable form of tuberculosis is widespread in those parts of the world sending refugees to the United States. Syria, once a prosperous Islamic country, has been devastated by war. The records of its citizens have been, in many cases, lost. Foreign terrorists fighting in Syria can easily be swept up as unvettable refugees headed to the United States. The companies that build the border wall are protecting the United States and its citizens. We should encourage these construction companies, not discourage them, as SB 30 does.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Please do not support SB 30.
Robert Lowton, a member of the People Rising. A border fence will significantly reduce the flow of heroin, cocaine, methamphetamines, and other drugs into our country. A border wall would significantly reduce the profits of the drug cartels. A border wall will raise the cost of heroin, cocaine, and methamphetamines, and it will only be a, you know, a drug of choice of the super rich. In the community that's most affected by open borders and the drugs that come in are the poor communities. On sanctuary cities, sanctuary cities creates fear. Sanctuary cities reduces the contact of the immigration and customs enforcement agents in our jails. When they're not in the jail, they have to find, they have to go after the illegal aliens that committed serious crimes in their homes, in their workplaces, and in their neighborhoods. The way ICE works is when an illegal alien is convicted of a serious crime, that the, then the ICE agents put a, could put a hold on them, and then, and then they are allowed to contact the illegal alien within 24 hours and deport them. When ICE is not allowed to work in the jails, then they have to go over the deportables in their homes, in their workplaces, and in their community. When they enter a home, everyone gets fingerprinted, and then they sweep up--
Thank you, Mr.--
--people that had, that have committed less serious crimes.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Sanctuary cities creates fear.
Mr. Lowton, your time is up. Thank you.
Good evening, board members. My name's Jeff Schwick. I'm the founder of San Diegans for Secure Borders. Myself and my group have been fighting open borders and illegal immigration anarchy in San Diego for 12 years. Some of you probably know about us and know about me, and we are determined to stop the Marxist, open-border, left-wing politicians such as most of you up there. We are going to stop you. We spoke loud and clear in November as a nation and as a country. We want the immigration anarchy stopped.
Sorry, Mr. Schwick, I'm going to have to ask everybody again, please be respectful for anybody who's speaking tonight. Go ahead.
The fact that you guys would even consider entertaining the notion of opposing a border wall, as one of the other speakers said, we already have a border wall here, 15 miles of secure border fence, and you better be damn thankful we have it, because it keeps you safe every day. We used to have thousands of illegals running across that border every night, terrorizing residents on that southern border down there, San Ysidro area. Thank God that Duncan Hunter and others built that fence, and we're going to build it all the way across the southern border, whether you guys like it or not, okay? I'm sure all of you read the paper this morning. Right there, top story, SUV chased by Border Patrol crashes. Guess where seven Mexican citizens in that SUV, one smuggler, six aliens crossed the border. Guess where they crossed? Right where the 15-mile border, the double fence ends. That's where Trump's going to build the next part of the border. So we are going to secure this border. You guys do what you want. We're taking it back, so enjoy.
Okay, I believe we've got a motion in a second to support this item. Any board comments? No board comments? Okay, with that, please vote.
I'd like, I'd like to make a few. So, yeah, we do have a border, and that border has not done what people said it was going to do, and I don't think it hasn't done, because it's not complete and covers every square foot across the state of California or this nation. Borders aren't working. Borders do not work. It's not borders that make us safe. What makes us safe, what makes us safe is-- What makes us safe is being able to have educational programs, communities that respect, understand each other, that acknowledge the diversity of our community, where we can work together, plan together, and develop the safe environments that'll be safe for all students. So that's the intent of this resolution, is to acknowledge the fact that this is not about borders. This is about people, attitudes, and it's about civility. And I also think it's about American patriotism. And we can be more patriotic without the border than we can with.
I can wait for you guys to calm down. I can wait. About four years ago, I went over to Israel. And in Israel, they built a wall because of terrorism. And then I went and visited a town that didn't have a wall between them and the Palestinian region. And I was curious, how were they dealing with the relationship with the Palestinian community? Because they did not have a wall. Did they have problems with terrorism there? Whereas in other places where there was a wall, they continued to have problems with terrorism. Now, we need to let the speakers speak. Thank you. And so, you know, we asked the mayor of that town, without a wall between their Jewish community and the Palestinian community, what are they doing to try to build a coalition and a friendship? And they said that they had a variety of different things. First of all, in their schools, they had Jewish and Palestinian and Arab students going to school together. And that through that collaboration, students were learning about each other's cultures. And the level of hate, because of understanding and learning about the other groups and their ideas, resulted in, there were various assessments that they would take on, would you have a friend that was like that other group? And as they took these surveys over the years, they figured out that the more that Jewish and Muslim and Arab students played soccer together on the same team, the more that they went to school together, the less hate that they would have. And that they were more likely, as the years went on, to be able to say that they would have a friend that was Arab or Muslim, even though they were different. And I thought that that was very profound. Here we were in Israel, with all the centuries of tension and hate and misunderstanding, that there was a community that didn't need a wall, because they were figuring out other strategies to help build bridges between their culture and other cultures. And that was something that was quite interesting for me and other folks that were from San Diego on this trip with the Jewish Federation. So I was really excited to learn on this journey. And if we can just bring part of that lesson back, a lesson where Muslim and Jewish people can live together in peace, in a community where they employed ways of bringing people together instead of building walls to divide them. And that's one of the reasons why I support SB 30. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, with no further comment, please vote. All right. Pass is 5-0. Let's move on to item H1, and this is an information report on water testing in our schools. Superintendent Martin.
Thank you, President Barr. This, as you said, is an information report, and I'm going to invite up Drew Rollins to help present this report. And it's regarding the water testing that we began on April 4th. City of San Diego's Public Utilities Department started testing the water in our district schools and schools that were operating on district property for possible lead contamination in the water. And we thought that, there's been a lot of talk about it. We have a district's, oh, here it is. We have a district frequently asked questions page. We've been trying to keep the public informed every step of the way, but we thought tonight it would be important to update comprehensively everything that we've done, including the things that are already publicly available. But I wanted Drew to be up here with me tonight to present where we currently are with the district-wide water sampling. As you know, that was required by the state of California, and our district is going as quickly as we can to have all of our schools tested before the summer break, getting a complete testing and water sampling happening before the summer break, which was lightning speed. And I want to say thank you to the partnership with the city of San Diego, and thank the State Water Resources Control Board and people that worked with us to be able to do testing as quickly as possible. So with that, I'll turn it over to Drew to give this comprehensive update.
Great. Perfect timing. So just a quick update on our water sampling and the concern for lead in the drinking water in our schools. As the superintendent touched on, really this is a partnership between the city, the school district, and even the state. You know, the governor, the state superintendent of public instruction, through the State Water Resources Board, put this plan in place so that we could proceed with this testing. I should note, and as the superintendent touched on, the city has been an excellent and very cooperative partner in this. They're our water provider, and they've agreed to carry out the sampling plan on a very rapid timeline, ahead of what is actually required by the state permitting. Finally, I'd also like to just touch on that it's been a team effort within the district as well, including safety office, physical plan operations, nursing and wellness, communications and public information office, principals and campus staff. We are starting our testing. We started our testing on April 4th in the southeast corner of the district, moving west and up through the district. Five campuses are sampled daily, Tuesday through Saturday. Five, minimum of five samples, or excuse me, a maximum of five samples per school site. The protocol for the sampling requires that the testing is done first thing in the morning, so the water has sat in the pipe in the line overnight. And we are making tremendous progress, and will be done with all of our testing by mid-June. So we have also established a water flushing protocol. As I touched on, in general terms, the longer water sits in a pipe without moving, the greater the opportunity for the lead to leach into the water, in basic terms. Potential for the lead contamination, so periods overnight, over the weekends, is when this action takes place. And flushing is an easy way to combat that. We've established a district-wide flushing protocol, running the water for one minute before use each school day. Also note that while we are doing our sampling program, and one of the concerns was that we would flush a drinking fountain and then go and test it. But that's not what we would do. We actually tag out the specific fixtures that are going to be tested the night before. So then they are tested first thing in the morning, very early in the morning. Only after the testing would any flushing take place. It's our intent to continue this flushing protocol through the round of sampling and testing, and most likely beyond. But we want to get a broader view of where we are with our tests and our results before we make further decisions. Just kind of see that, again, we requested testing with the city on February 14th. UT kind of picked up on that as well. And we are one of many districts throughout the state that are looking at this. We have reached out to other school districts in the county. We've talked to the County Office of Education. We've been sharing notes with LA Unified, who has been working on this program as well. We've also connected with districts throughout the nation through the Council of Great City Schools. Here's where we are. This slide was built on Friday in time to submit to the board packet. We've updated since then, because again, we tested Saturday morning and Monday and Tuesday this week. So where we have submitted 109 plans, we now submitted 121 plans to the city, where we have completed 72, where it says 72 schools being sampled, that number is now 86. Test results remain the same. We have results back on 29 of our schools, with only two schools, and I should say schools, above the action level. Both of those schools share the Emerson campus, and that's where we've had our only issue so far. I should touch on the sampling plan. Takes effort on our side as well. It's a coordination with the school site to determine high-use drinking fountains. We also want to touch on kitchens and child development centers located on the campus. Plan includes a photo and a description and exact location of where the testing will take place. I think that's all. As you know, we are searching to, or testing to an action level of 15 parts per billion. Just to give a sense of that, one part per billion is a drop of water in an Olympic-sized swimming pool. It's a very sensitive testing procedure. As I mentioned, the only issue we have encountered to date is at the Emerson campus of the Emerson Bandini Elementary and San Diego Cooperative Charter School. Just to kind of make sure we're all on the same page, Emerson Bandini is two campuses. The Emerson Bandini School have students on both Emerson and Bandini. They share both of those campuses with the San Diego Cooperative Charter 2. So January 26th, we were informed of water quality issue on the Emerson campus. We addressed that. We ultimately identified the presence of vinyl chloride in the water, which is attributable, attributable to degradation of plastic or PVC water pipe. We rerouted that piping and solved that issue. While we were there, we were also initiating our district-wide lead testing program, and we felt it made sense to kick that off by testing the water on the Emerson campus. So that's what we did. We have tested. We have resolved the vinyl chloride issues. We have resolved the lead issues on the San Diego Co-op 2 campus. We wanted to do a little more testing on some of the portables that the Emerson Bandini School uses. We're waiting for those results. That school has been on, it's a year-round school. It's been on spring break. They come back tomorrow. We've been coordinating with the principal as far as restoring that site to using the water fountains as we, again, have resolved those issues, with the exception of three classrooms where we will continue to provide bottled water while we await the final results. Obviously, the concern around all this is the health impact of, potential health impact of lead in drinking water to our students. And we've connected very closely with our nursing and wellness folks and Dr. Terrace, the district physician, to make sure that we understand where all this is going. There are, we're aware and sensitive to how that works. See if I can get that, yeah. We, as having San Diego Co-op 2 as an example, we met with parents and families from Co-op 2, included the district staff on both the work, the safety side of it, with what the physical issue is with the plumbing, as well as nursing and wellness, Dr. Terrace again. Plus, we brought in, through their relationships, County Public Health and San Diego County Childhood Lead Prevention Program, all to meet and discuss with the families the issues that they encountered. We've created a webpage, somewhat of a one-stop shopping within the district's internet site, to provide information. This includes kind of the background on how we got here. It includes sampling results, as well as other resources. Again, we have engaged our communication and public information group to work with us to make sure that we are transparent. And as we learn things, as we get test results, we're getting them out there so all can see what's going on. As I mentioned, this also, this is a broader issue than just us. Our local members of the state legislature are also concerned. This picture up here is a meeting we attended with local representatives. Our superintendent and trustee Whitehurst Payne were in attendance as we discussed this issue. We can expect their continued support here. Again, touching on transparency, this is a screenshot of test results through our district website. As you can see, where schools are listed here, as we take the test, we will load the sampling information onto the website. Basically, you'll see a number of statuses pending, meaning we've taken a sample and haven't seen the result yet. Below action level, we've gotten a result back, and it was favorable. Above action level, again, that only being the Emerson Bandini School and the San Diego Cooperative School on the Emerson campus, where they would show above action level. And within that, you would be able to click on the link and see the test results as they are provided to us by the city. What we added to the website today was a resolved final report for San Diego Co-op 2, which tells the story of how we got from the testing we did to the intermediate work we did and the final results showing that we had cleared the issue. We're on track to complete our sampling by mid-June. We've been fortunate so far with the results in having 29 schools where we have had results below the action level of 15 parts per billion. However, we are ready to respond if we get further, or if we get additional results that are showing being above the action level. Our basic process is shown here. We would secure the contaminated area, the sink, the outlet. We will switch the campus to bottled water. We'll perform our communication throughout the process, investigate the issue, resolve the plumbing concern, if you will. And then, as part of the process, the city will come and resample, and we'll work through the process that way. We don't know the full impact to us financially. I do provide here just that we know the work at Emerson costs us about $12,000 between providing bottled water, doing more intermediate testing to figure out where the source of the contamination was, and also the physical plumbing repairs that went along with that. Just a list of the names of the folks that have been making this go along. It's been a lot of work for us lately. So we are concerned, you know, we want to make sure we're providing the families the best information so they can be confident in the water that's supplied to their children during the school day.
Thank you.
Thank you, Drew, and your whole team for working together. You listed a few people that are part of it, but I know it's been a complete, comprehensive team effort to do this expeditiously. I appreciate your efforts.
Sure, thank you.
I want to thank you, Drew, and all the team for all the work that you've done on a massively accelerated rate. You know, when we learned that we had the ability to do this, to test the water in all the schools, and that the state had established the deadline of 2019, you know, we all felt, well, why do we need to wait? Let's try to test every school as fast as we can. And so I also want to thank the city of San Diego and Mayor Kevin Faulkner for partnering with the school district to do this as fast as possible, testing five schools a day and having every school done by mid-June. I really appreciate your work and making sure that this happens. I do have a couple of questions. First question is, I believe that there's some state bond money that can help alleviate the costs associated with this, or to mitigate when problems do arise. Is the state releasing any of those bond dollars yet?
No, and I'm probably about a week behind, but it's, they're still working on the guidance and direction of when you'll be able to submit for the funding.
Okay. Would we be able to disperse the expenditures and then seek reimbursement?
Yes, there is discussion of that being retroactive for any repairs we need to make now, yes.
Okay, yeah, because I don't think we should wait until that money is released.
No, we have no intention of waiting.
Okay.
And that was the subject of the conversation, part of what we discussed when we met with the state legislators. We talked about the financial impact, and we discussed the fact that we are going to move forward because time is of the essence and we can't wait. But any proposed legislation or any monetary fix that may come forward, that it needed to be retroactive.
Retroactive, right.
And they hurt us when we said that.
Great. And then the EPA guidelines. I noticed that, and maybe some folks, you know, listening and watching the presentation, are hearing actionable and watching the presentation, are hearing actionable level of fifteen parts-per-billion. Where, where does that fifteen parts-per-billion number come? That's the EPA guidelines?
Yes, that is, from the EPA guideline.
Okay.
It's a little different for a, I mean, and that's what they've always tracked to. It's a little different, there's actually, when they perform their testing for a water system, for the city of San Diego that provides our water, they actually work to the ninetieth percentile of their testing. We don't do any of that. It's just purely if you're, if you're fifteen parts-per-billion or higher, then it's below, above the action level.
Okay. And, and so then you're saying that according to the EPA and that, say, for example, nine parts-per-billion of lead in a water, that's, that's nothing to be concerned about?
I, that's certainly not nothing to be concerned about. I think we want to get through this process and really gather the data, but really, we have a few results right now that are in that range of nine, between five and nine.
Okay.
And what we are, what part of our plan is, again, is that flushing protocol. We, we believe that flushing protocol will make sure that that water is safe going forward during the day.
Okay. And we do not flush the day that we are going to be testing that school?
Correct.
Okay.
We flush, we will not flush that specific flusher, fixture.
That, okay, I understand.
Yeah.
Or, or cycle water through the pipe?
We, correct.
No, it's not the night before.
Right. At, at this point in time, I'd like to make a motion to ask the superintendent to look into, to look into mitigation opportunities for schools that are coming in with lead, but that's below fifteen parts-per-billion, and come back to the board, you know, with, with a plan to address those schools that are not, that are below the actionable level but still have some lead parts in those schools.
And if I can offer just one more comment on that.
Sure, yes, sir.
What we are already doing is, is starting a testing protocol there where we, we know what the water coming out of the pipe, when you first do it is. Now, we're going to do our flush and see what the results are coming out of that, just to make sure we're confident that the flushing is resolving the problem. So, that's part of what we should do.
Right, right.
Ultimately, I think there's a bigger.
And that could be a part of the superintendent's plan. So, my motion is to just ask the superintendent to come back to the board at a later date with, with a proposal for us to evaluate and address the schools that are between one and fifteen parts-per-billion. That's my motion.
I, I support the idea, the one maybe amendment and, or question I'd have for Mr. Rollins is, my understanding is that the city only reports out on levels above five parts-per-billion?
Correct. The detection level is at five, so it would be five.
So, then I'll amend my motion.
Between five and fifteen, yeah.
Between five and fifteen parts-per-billion.
Great.
Yeah.
Do we have a second for that? I'll second that. Any further, yeah, Dr. McCray?
Comment and a, and a question. The comment, definitely you've already been credited for the good work that you're doing and the way in which you identified the problem and how you reached out to find partners in identifying issues and solutions, and then working for a very complicated testing process that had to be expedited, and, and then now we've, we've got a report. I want to, to acknowledge our information office as well and the work that they've done in order to take these results and to communicate them clearly to our, to our public in a question-answer fact sheet, so people can go to our website to find out, you know, what are we doing, why are we doing it, and, and what are the results telling us, and what the results are at each site. In addition to that, we've communicated well with our parents and our community members about it, and also with the press. And my question is, we have, press is releasing some of the results and an interactive map. Are they getting that information from us, or are they?
Yes, they're taking the same data that we post and they're putting, putting in a different fashion.
They're just leaking them down. And then I'm also concerned about the, the cumulative effect of, of the, of the results that, that, that we may have at the five level, six level, and, and, and how that might accumulate over time, so I definitely support, support the motion. In addition, I'm wondering, this cannot just be an isolated incident at one, within our schools. Maybe there are, I'm wondering, what is unique about Emerson that was either in the plumbing, the piping, or the construction, or the time that was different from the schools that are, that are around it?
I would offer a few things, and, and yes, Emerson's been a learning opportunity for us as well. First of all, you have very old portables on that campus, and that's where a lot of our problems were concentrated. Generally, lead in solder, or there was a big transition through the Safe Drinking Water Act, nineteen eighty-six, lead in solder, lead in fixtures, brass fixtures. So, there's a significant change at that point in time. Some of our construction at Emerson, particularly those portables, was pre-1986 and, and as early as 1955. Secondly, I think the thing you can also understand with lead is it can be, it can be the, the valve on the handle that turns the water on the water fountain, that just that one component itself can be the source of the lead contamination. So, you know, it's, our, our staff, the PPO, the plumbing guys have done a great job of chasing that back. We've used incremental testing to kind of find how far down the line the, the lead contamination shows up in the water, and they've done a real good job of working through that. Up until 2014, even a lead-free fixture, a brass fixture, could have up to eight percent lead in it and still be classified as lead-free. So, just because we're post-1986 doesn't mean we're out of the woods. And, and I think what we saw at Emerson was we had a very new, relatively new fixture on the campus where we also had a problem. It was a very easy fix. We just took it back from the, the fountain to the wall, and that solved the problem. But it was, is there as well, I guess.
I want to commend you on all the hard work that's gone into this, but one of the things that I do want to note is the concern that we had once lead was found and the protocol that you've established, and I do appreciate your bringing in the physician and having him to direct us on which way to go with a site once we've discovered that, such as what's going on at Emerson Bandini.
Thank you. Okay, I, one more thing I should mention, you know, much as we had that conversation with San Diego Co-op, because that school was back in session, again, Emerson Bandini has been out for spring break. They come back tomorrow. We have meetings on-site with staff and parents there next week. That same type of discussion, and our county partners will be there with us as well.
Yeah, please.
Why, you said earlier that there was only a maximum of five samples being taken, and I was wondering why that is, that it comes from the same, like, pipeline, or like, why?
Well, the, the maximum of five is, is what's established by the state through the regulation.
Okay.
But thank you very much, because what we are doing, though, is at, at a site where five is not enough, we are taking additional samples. The city won't do it, but we are doing that through our own independent laboratory. If five is not enough, we'll do additional testing there. We're testing in kitchens. We're also making sure we're testing child development centers. But the basic answer of five is because that's what those state regulations says.
Okay.
I, I just want to clarify my motion, and that is, after we're done doing the initial testing and mitigating actionable sites, then have the superintendent come back and look at, drill down even more to the five to fifteen PBV, okay?
Thank you for saying that, because I was going to clarify the timing of it. Appreciate that.
I'm, I'm just wondering, what's the scientific basis for this in terms of the five to fifteen? I mean, every substance that we intake has, has some small trace of, of toxic, we, we go into a building and it says this building is known by the state of California to have carcinogens and so forth, so how are we, what is the significance of this between five and fifteen parts-per-billion? I mean, it's just sort of like we're trying to go for the most pure, but, but I don't know that that has.
There, there are initiatives to, to lower that threshold with, there are initiatives within the state to lower that threshold.
Okay.
Why, we're at five and fifteen. Fifteen is the EPA standard, that it's different than public health goals and all that, but that is the number. And then five, again, is the detection threshold that we're working with, with the city, so.
Who sent the five?
I'm trying to, I can't quite remember if it's within the regulation, but again, I believe that is the sensitivity of their equipment will only get them to five.
Yeah. And, and that's a great point, Dr. Evans. I've met with a lot of folks about this issue over the last several months. A couple of doctors and physicians that say that the human body can handle a lot of different things that, that we're putting into our environment, but one of the things that the human body cannot deal with is lead at any level. So, that's part of it. And the second reason is because I've also met with representatives from CalPerg, which is a statewide organization that's really dedicated to public interest and consumer protections, and they have done a lot of research on this issue as well, and they're really hoping that we'll do, we'll go above and beyond EPA's guidelines to keep our kids safe.
That's okay. I just want to make sure we weren't arbitrarily drawing a line, okay?
Yeah.
Okay. We've got a, did you have comments? No, okay, we've got a motion on the table. Please vote.
Thank you, Drew.
Okay, and thank you, Drew, and thank you for the excellent work, yeah.
I move item H2.
Okay. We've got a motion for item H2. Do we have a second? Is there a second? Okay. About any comment, please vote.
I move item H3.
Do we have a second on item H3?
A sec.
And we've got one speaker, Christian Jarlov.
Yes, please.
So, I'm Christian Jarlov. I'm the headmaster of San Diego French-American School, and first of all, I want to thank you for, and thank you and your staff for all the, the hard work in bringing this item forward. Thank you very much. So, we are looking forward to working with the district to extend our lease in order to finance and construct a new permanent educational facility and new sports field to replace the existing one, which is half a century old. We have support from our nearby homeowners association, churches, and neighbors. During our eleven years in the community, we have had the pleasure of hosting San Diego Unified Students and the, and the community to use the sports field and other facilities. Most recently, we had, for example, La Roya High School lacrosse team during their field construction. We have also enjoyed engaging in French language and cultural collaborations with Mission Bay High School, whose students, for example, attended recently a math and French workshop in our school led by one of our teachers. And then they attended our traditional winter show, which, winter fair, which is called Marché de Noël in French. We, we have also many of our students go after the eighth grade, after our middle school, they go on to attend and succeed at the IB International Baccalaureate Program in San Diego High, Mission Bay High, and also some of them go to La Roya High School. And they're very, very well-educated students, international, speak languages, French and Spanish as well. These are just a few examples, a few more examples, if I have time, for some of the community activities that we do. French lecture series at the La Roya Library, story time for the children. We have also a music and artist program led by visiting local artists from La Roya, the Center for World Music, or the La Roya Playhouse. Our students also raise money for local charities. They, they volunteer their time, gather goods for organizations such as Radis Children Hospital, Feeding America San Diego Chapter, or the Monarch School, and other events, including beach cleanup. Also, we have the Mound Solidad Veteran Association, using our parking for overflow whenever they, they have a special event. We also hosted recently the French Film Club in our auditorium. So, again, we look forward to continuing to collaborate with the district and the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any board member questions or comments? If not, please vote.
I move item H4.
We have a motion for item H4. Is there a second? Okay, why don't we ask Superintendent Martin to introduce the item?
Thank you, President Barrera. H4 is the work year reduction for non-represented managers, confidential, paraeducators with the agreements with AASD, Classified and Certified Units, and the POA regarding the work year reduction. We're asking to approve these work year reductions brought forward tonight.
Okay, I have a question. So, first of all, we need to clarify that the POA work year withdraw, I'm sorry, go ahead.
They're clarifying for me what I just said. Go ahead.
All right, the POA, what's that? The POA work year reduction is withdrawn because it was not ratified by its members. Is that correct? Okay. Well, actually, we've got two speakers, so I'll call on them, and then I'll proceed with my questions. Sabrina Hanlon and Mary Lou Finley.
Sabrina Hanlon, Paraeducator President. Almost forgot why I'm here. So, work year reduction. So, I don't know if you guys realize that imposing eleven days on ten-month employees is pretty significant, five percent of our income. Most of us are very low-wage earners by choice because we work for you. You know, trying to negotiate this was rather pushed upon us. We weren't really given the opportunity to get the information that we requested because of this pressure of sixty days by ed code. Well, the ed code states that you need to notify us sixty days in advance. It doesn't mean to say that you need to impose on us sixty days in advance. So, I'm, I'm very frustrated that you've chosen to impose this on us without us letting, without letting us have the proper information to perhaps maybe have solutions to this problem. I mean, I'm not denying that you guys are in dire straits financially, but that wasn't our fault. We didn't spend the money. So, honestly, you know, I'm just disappointed. It's very frustrating for my members while you're cutting us, you're cutting our hours, people are losing their benefits, and now you're going to take away what was really forced vacation. I was appalled to have someone say to me, "Well, you're, you're getting extra time off." Well, we really aren't. That was time off that you guys were paying us out of our vacation pay. That wasn't earned money, like we were working a day, and now you're going to take a day off from us. We're still going to be there every day with those kids, every day with those kids, and now we're going to have eleven more vacation days that we won't be able to use because your sites can't afford to put subs in if we wanted a vacation day. We already have people get denied vacation time because there is no sub. I hear it all the time. People get denied to get trained because there's no money to put a sub in so you can go get properly trained to deal with students. That's sad. So, again, I'm just disappointed, I'm saddened. I don't know where to go with this. I, you know, I wish that you guys would really reconsider imposing this on us at the moment. We get where you're at. We understand. Let us, notice us. We already are noticed. We know, we know we're, we've got a problem. But that doesn't mean you should force it on us at the moment. Let us try to work something out. I, I don't understand. We are reasonable people. I feel like I'm a fairly reasonable person, and I don't think I'm asking for too much. Again, ten-month employees taking a five percent hit. I don't know how my members are going to pay their rents, pay their mortgages, put food on the table, and, you know, those members, they actually have kids in the schools, and, and those kids are not going to feel that impact.
Yeah, my name is Mary Lou Finley. I'm seventy-two, working at Bell Middle School as a special ed assistant, and I am also very disheartened that after our bargaining units bargained with you on this and couldn't come to an agreement, so now you're going to vote and make it happen? What was, I mean, I don't understand how our input and our needs, I, I don't understand how you think that somehow the students' needs are being meant when we don't have cafeteria workers, bus drivers, clerks, para- that somehow the students' needs are being met when we don't have cafeteria workers, bus drivers, clerks, paraeducators. We really do make the system work. So when you cut us, it's the students who are hurting. And it's time to find other solutions besides continuously cutting us. Thank you.
Okay. We have a motion from Dr. Evans on this item. Is there, is there a second? With no second, this item cannot move forward. Yeah, go ahead. You're, okay. A second by Dr. Whitehurst Payne. I'll comment on this first. I think that the, I think everybody understands and acknowledges that we've got a financial problem that we need to fix. And I think there's a lot of reasons that we have, at this point in time, projected $124 million deficit. And I think that some of those reasons are out of our control, and some of those reasons are the result of decisions that we've made. And I would say, you know, to our bargaining units, part of the decision-making that we are responsible for, that is creating a challenge for us, is coming from agreements that we've made around salary increases. And I will support those agreements. I certainly supported those agreements. I voted for them. And I will, and I, in retrospect, would support them again. I think they were critical and I think necessary in order to bring our district into fairer compensation and more competitive compensation with other districts. But I also think that we've got a long and strong track record in this district of solving problems together. And that includes negotiation. And, and I'll speak later on, on issues later in the agenda, but when we have the opportunity to negotiate, we should take that opportunity. And I trust Sabrina Hanlon. I trust what you said about your not only willingness, but your capacity to work with the district to solve these issues. We have, as part of this item, we have an agreement with AASD. And that was the product of negotiation. And negotiation means we come to the table with our bargaining unit. And the negotiations can be tough at times, but they can also identify solutions that we would not have identified had we not worked together and negotiated. So my position on this item, H4, is that we should go ahead and approve the item for AASD, approve the item for the non-represented managers and confidential, but that we should pull the item for now with the paraeducators in order to have the opportunity for a real negotiation. I don't think that can go on forever. My recommendation is that we put this item back on the agenda in our special meeting on May the 11th. And between now and May the 11th, we see if we can get to an agreement that actually works for both, for both parties. So we've got a motion on the floor. I will oppose that motion. And then if that motion fails to carry, I'll come back with a counter motion that would approve the item for the non-represented managers, confidential, confidential and paraeducators and AASD, but remove the, the item with, regarding paraeducators. Any other board questions or comments, Dr. McCrory?
Yeah, I, I want to thank you for your comments. Thank you for the history. You've been here before. Some of us are new. And the, the pain of making these kinds of decisions are heartfelt. And, and it's, we are confronted with, with tough and difficult situations that are going to require some hard work being done by, by all sides. And I think this is our opportunity for maybe moving in the direction that you have suggested, for a way for us to honor and support the collaborative process of, of working together with all of our stakeholders, and in this case, the, our bargaining units, to arrive at a solution that'll be beneficial for all of us.
Dr. Whitehurst Payne?
I guess for me, as a new member on this board, a part of what my expectations would be are, you know, I've been looking for is, and maybe this is by math mind looking at it, but for everything that we're suggesting that we should cut, I mean, I'd like to see futuristically what the budget line item is, what the, the overreach is, some history on why we've gotten to this point. I mean, it just, it just kind of feels. I mean, I'm a newbie. I confess, I'm a newbie at this, but it's like your own budget. If you have a budget and a certain area is out of line, then you have to deal with that line. You look at it, why, how, what do I need to do to correct it? But this, this has a feeling of, you know, it's, we're like flying by the seat of our pants kind of thing, rather than just, I really don't, people bring things to us, things to us. But I don't see each program spelled out with how much that program costs, are we over or under, what are the things that need to be changed and corrections on that for the long-term future? Because otherwise, we're going to get to the same place again if we don't know where we are and how we got here and where we need to go. I'm just, I'm just speaking for myself about this and how I like to logically look at things and say, "Okay, this department, we have $10 million here and we're at $12 million." Then you can ask the question, "Why are we at $12 million? We overspent by two." What's going on in that particular department that we need to correct or that program that needs to be addressed? Or, I don't know. That's, that's why I'm like, not, come on.
Thank you, President Barrera. We've, in looking at the various categories of the budget that we have been exploring and trying to identify the, you know, the kinds of things that we need to do to achieve a balanced budget and the kinds of programs that we do want to continue to support strategically spending, there are some solutions in the budget that we're looking at from various classified units and things like that that have been brought forward by the superintendent. Some of those were from various classified bargaining units in the, in the form of a work year reduction. However, that, that was with the caveat that we would bargain with those units on that to discuss, you know, how can we work together to achieve a balanced budget and try to mitigate the impacts by staffing? So first of all, the proposal that we had heard for the reduced work year was that, that there would not affect instructional days. Second was that we would work with or bargain with the different classified units to try to help them achieve a balanced budget and understand what we need as a district to minimize the number of layoffs necessary. So I believe the reason why this item is on the agenda is because there hasn't been that conversation yet. And so, for example, if there's a need to save in one category $9 million in the budget, then we're hoping to achieve that through various means. Now, we could achieve the $9 million in budget reductions through a reduced work year or other things that maybe we're not realizing yet that we could learn about through negotiation and bargaining or through additional layoffs. And I, I would tend to concur with President Barrera that we need to allow a little bit more time for bargaining to occur. And so to that extent, I will oppose this particular motion because there is not, we don't absolutely have to act on this tonight. We could wait until May to do it. Because with classified employees, we all know that as long as we follow the proper protocol of noticing and the timelines as outlined by law, that we can make those kinds of reductions and savings to impact the budget going forward. And so I, I think it's worth that investment. I think it's worth going back to the table and to try to figure out how can we work together? Because we all know we need to have a balanced budget. We need to be fiscally responsible. And we need to be responsible to ensure that we continue to have the support staff that we know our kids need. And so if this is, if this motion does not pass, then I will support a motion, looking at and exploring other options. Thank you.
First of all, with Dr. Whitehurst Payne, I understand what he was saying about if we budgeted $10 million in a particular area and we ended up spending $12 million, we need to look at that. But the reality is, and that, and there might be some savings here and there, but the reality is that we may have budgeted $10 million in one area and now the state is giving us $9 million. And so when we spent $10 million and we were spending it the best way we thought possible and we have to deal with $9 million, we have to figure out how to redesign it to do it for, for $9 million. But I guess at this point, I would, I'd like the superintendent to comment because we've had plenty of opportunities to go in and meet on the budget and ask and talk about different things. And I want to know, you know, it's sort of, I just want to know what she has to say in response to these comments.
Well, I want to be perfectly clear about the solutions that we've brought forward. We've been talking about since December. We've been bringing forward solutions and putting together a package where none of us wanted to make any of these cuts. We have promises and commitments that we want to make and keep to our families, to our communities in our LCAP and the goals that we hold sacred for our students. We put together a plan to how, how to reduce our deficit by $124.4 million. And that package is something we've been discussing at every single chance that we have had with you, both individually, open and closed session, with our bargaining units being perfectly clear about how to move forward in a situation where we don't want to have to do this. As we move forward, we have identified the solutions that are going to allow us to, with reduced staff, keep our commitments to our students. Will it be difficult? Will there be challenges? Absolutely. We're trying to not affect the school, we're not affecting the school year for students, the number of learning days. We have $8 billion that we will be spending next year to deliver on our goals. And with due respect, Dr. Whitehurst Payne, we have had the opportunities to discuss this.
Let me just, I want to respond to that, if you will. I don't deny those meetings. We have met and we've talked about it. But I think you've missed the whole point of my, my point, which is that you should not be bringing things to me as an individual, December meeting with me throughout. We need to have a plan with a list of all the programs for everybody to see up on the web that says, whatever the program is, now, I'm not saying this for applause or anything. I'm just talking about it from a logical perspective. We should have every, every year, in fact, that's my desire, every year, whatever programs we have, even now, preparing for next year, we need to know what is the budget that we are approving? And then how are we spending in comparison to that budget? And then based upon that, if we see, for example, special ed is bleeding by $10 million a year, why is that happening? Are we also addressing the fact that this district has gone down in enrollment every single year for I don't know how many years, and yet we've not reduced the workforce commensurately with that? I mean, that's a reality. And, and it goes on in, in every department, preschool, whatever the department is, noon duty assistance. We've been bleeding over in that. Why haven't we, if we need to make an adjustment to even budget more money for that, then we need to have that discussion honestly about each and every department so that we can know, yes, we've got it right on this department. We don't need to look any further. This one, this department needs more money, or we need to make some adjustments to this department. I mean, that's the kind of discussion I'm talking about. It should not be that we wind up here. I've said I would support this because I mean for us to right-size this district, for us to get this budget right and to move forward so that we don't have this problem in the future. But what I'm saying is that if we don't do something systematic so that everybody can see, including the board members, about what's going on in terms of each department and how they're spending or overspending or whatever the issue is, then we're going to be back here again with you bringing some department saying, "Oh, well, we need to cut this or we need to cut that." But why? Why do we need to cut it?
So we started the LCAP three years ago. And my understanding, the LCAP is a way of connecting state money with school program. And the idea was to identify our goals and our objectives. We can't do everything, so we have to set priorities. And we, I think, went through 12 indicators. I think we ended up with 10, and I think we're down now to, now to six. To me, the LCAP should be, and if it is, and obviously it isn't, been, been effective. The LCAP should allow anybody in this room or on this dais to take a look at our budget and see where is the money going and why is the money going there? And we should be able to, to track it to know at the end of the year how much we spent, where did we overspend or underspend, and, and also help us go forward in terms of revising and, and resubmitting. That should be a collaborative process that starts from the, from the, from the, from the schools and work its, its way up. And, and it probably should be a way to do, to handle it and to slice it so that it could be interactive. So it could be a department-by-department look, program-by-program look, school-by-school look. There needs to be a way so people can understand where the money came from and where the money went. And I would hope that we could make it more transparent and easier to understand and simpler for everybody so they can be meaningfully engaged in helping us solve these kind of problems that we're confronted with today.
So the, the context in which staff has done the work that you asked us to do. You asked us to come forward with $124.4 million worth of solutions. We've done that. And we did it in the context of the LCAP and the promises and commitments that were made. And that was not easy work, to figure out where are we going to cut something, abide by our contracts, stay within our LCAP goals, which departments, and, and to your point, Dr. Whitehurst Payne, going forward, the final budget, this is leading towards the final budget adoption. The final budget adoption lists all of the programs, actions, and services, like Dr. McCrory said, that are in the LCAP that we do have in place that will be going forward. And each cut that we brought forward, we brought forward with a plan for how are we going to be implementing our solutions for next year? And the final budget adoption is the overall spending plan for, for the following school year.
But, 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 you know, I must confess that I sat here and listened to people. They don't think we listen. I have notes on all of them. But I sat here and listened to someone come in and tell me that her child was in a special education class and there are two children in that class. Two. Two children. And I thought, that's an awfully expensive program. And how would I have known that if the woman hadn't come here and told me that we've got at least, and now it turns out, yes, we do have too many maud severe teachers? Because we cannot afford to pay that many folks for doing the job when the state and the feds are not giving us that much money. That's why we're number one in the state for special education spending. We can't afford that kind of money. We have to stay within our budget. It would be nice to have one-on-one, but if you don't have the money to do it, then you have to live within your budget. And whatever that budget line item is for special ed, based upon the number of children, that's what we need to do for every program. Preschool, somebody stood there and said there was an empty classroom and the teacher is being paid. I heard that. I took notes on that. We cannot afford that as a district. If we don't correct that kind of thing as a district, then we will be here every single year. We've got to stop that kind of practice. It just really is troubling that we It just really is troubling that we spent $10 million more in special education this year, probably last year, the year before. Preschool, $5 million more, whatever it is, that stuff adds up after time. And we need to stop it. That's why I'm voting tonight, to stop it.
And the reductions that we've recommended are to address exactly that. We looked for the efficiencies and the program options that would address those things.
Okay, we've got, we've got a motion on the floor, and a second, why don't we vote on that motion? On item H4? Are you Danielle Knack?
No, I'm Cap Cortez. I don't know if we want to.
I don't have you on item H4. Okay. Okay, I'm sorry.
I look down, I look down cuts.
Thank, thank you. We've, okay, that motion fails three to two. I'll make a counter motion that we accept the staff recommendation on the work year reduction for non-represented managers, confidential, and AASD, that we continue at the bargaining table with the paraeducators, with the goal of coming back with an agreement by May the 11th.
Second.
Do we have any discussion of that motion? Okay, please vote. Okay, that motion passes, score zero. Okay, we now move on to item H5, resolution of the matter of elimination of classified positions related to the Sand App program. Superintendent?
Thank you. This is the elimination of classified positions that are outlined in this item. This is a Sand App program, and this was specifically a program, services to San Diego. I want to emphasize that the services to our students will continue within the Sand App program. The elimination of these classified positions is due to the loss of the grant funding that was associated with it. We cannot continue to fund positions, as it will negatively impact the general fund unrestricted.
I move for approval.
In the spirit of Sharon Whitehurst Payne, I second.
We've got a motion and a second on this item. Any important questions or comments? If not, please vote.
I move item H6.
Okay, we've got a motion on item H6.
I would appreciate a second for purposes of discussion.
There a second? And we've got a second for purposes of discussion. Dr. Evans, I'm sorry, superintendent.
Thank you. This is our resolution, the matter of elimination of classified services and the programs or services that we're bringing forward tonight is part of our budget solution. Some of the positions that are being affected are vacant positions, and we wanted to make sure, we already talked about POA, we'd like, POA had a schedule to vote tonight, but that, they did not, they did not ratify that.
Okay, we've got, oh my gosh, we've got a large number of speakers on this item, so.
I'm May.
Sorry, I'm going to call you up, and we're going to limit it to a minute apiece. And if you don't need to speak on this item, please let it go. Elaine, Elaine Sabeti, Linda Kleiner, Jeff Goodman, Joellen Archer. Please go ahead.
Linda Kleiner, SciTech, Fard Middle School. I've been at SciTech for less than 10 years. During that time, I've been involved in two other layoffs. At this moment, I am not losing my job, but there's still time for that. I feel very sad, because I feel like you're, the people you selected to be on the negotiating team are not acting in a professional manner. They are not allowing us to talk, and do things, and schedule negotiations. We have tried, and they've said, oh, we'll put it off till May. And then, we hear from other people, sorry, you're not negotiating with us. We aren't given the opportunity. I'm really frustrated with that. I think it's time for you to get a new team. I was reviewing your Vision 2020, and seriously, I, I wanted to laugh, but I can't. There's no way, this current deficit just happened since November. Why did you hire upper management positions, knowing there was a deficit? You should have seen this coming and fixed it. I, I will not finish my whole thing, because there's no time. But I would like the people in the audience who live in the city of San Diego to please raise your hand. These are your voting members. They voted you in.
Thank you.
I voted you in. They can vote you out.
Joellen Archer, been here many times. I am now with the black armband for the adversarial way we are being negotiated with. There is no respect, there have been threats for these layoffs, because we didn't go right away, we wanted to negotiate the work year. Next year, if I was here with the extra vacation I have, with 13 days out for 11 months, I would have to take a vacation date every other week to not be over vacation, because I earn 14 hours a month. You are not looking at the total picture. You have picked the classified, because in 30 days, you can use it to solve your problem. Your structural challenges are that you've overspent what you brought in. You understood stirs and purrs for the last three years, you knew how it was going up. You're only 4% able in your LCF extra funds.
Thank you. Thank you, Joellen. Yep.
Hello, my name is Jeff Goodman, and I work for the San Diego Unified's Mental Health Resource Center. We are going to have several speakers here tonight. Our speakers are here to educate you on the devastating consequences of cutting mental health. We've also emailed our concerns in advance, but if you didn't have time to read the emails, we're going to speak to them tonight. Our presenters will provide very useful information that should ensure you vote no on these layoffs. While all district positions are important, you have chosen to target people who are literally handling life-or-death situations. We are the people who help to prevent suicide, which is the second-leading cause of death in teenagers. We are the people, we are the staff, who help to prevent tragedies like Columbine and Virginia Tech. I urge you to pay close attention to what we have to present here tonight, and vote no on these layoffs to mental health, so that 425 students in special education won't lose their legally mandated IEP mental health-related services. Thank you.
I'm Elaine Sabeti, library tech for 20 years. I've been actively working for 30 years to get school libraries built, stocked, and staffed for all SDUSD students. I'm so blessed that I was around in 2010 to see school libraries built with San Diego taxpayer money, and then filled with books with California Library Act money, and to all have some mandatory staffing, thanks to our past superintendent, Dr. Greer, and a forward-thinking school board. In those wonderful days of 2010, every elementary library had at least a half-time library assistant. Every secondary school library had a full-time library technician. Some schools were fortunate enough to also have a part-time library teacher. SDUSD school libraries were finally available to all of our students. They had access to books, computers, excellent online resources, all provided for free. Equitable access for all students was a dream come true, a culmination of many years of work, collaboration, and generous taxpayer contributions. I am hoping that my 20 years of serving you will give me 30 more seconds. They came the dark, these are my library colleagues, these are the people that also work and staff your, your school libraries. Some of them. Then came the dark years, worse in a way than having no library, was knowing the library was there with all its rich resources, but those resources were off limits. The library was dark, because new leadership regime didn't believe that open libraries were a priority for all students. And that brings us to today, April 25th. April, the celebration month for school libraries. Let's talk about how you celebrate that, school libraries. You've already voted to decimate elementary library staffing, one day a week, two hours a day, that's not enough time to check out 100 books, much less 1,000. Today, you vote to shutter every single school library, every single secondary school library, libraries that our grandchildren will be paying for, but cannot use. It doesn't feel like much of a party. It seems we have very different views about what celebrate means, and very different views about the importance of school libraries.
Thanks, Elaine. Okay, Lisa Cooper, Sabrina Nuspeka, Tina Merchant, Sally Kaufman, Mahogany Taylor, Jennifer Sims, Leslie Johnson.
My name is Lisa Cooper, and I've got a couple of different ideas here. First of all, how can the district expect labor groups to make well-rounded decisions for the good of all of its members without numbers? We haven't seen any numbers published from the first round of layoffs. What is the savings from those layoffs? How much more needs to be negotiated to get to that $124 million mark? Was there good savings? Next is the SERP. We know that, I heard you say that many people took it. Well, where's the savings from that? We need to see these numbers, even if they're preliminary for the negotiating, to negotiate in good faith. I mean, the district's showing us those numbers. Well, we can't wait for the May revise numbers, because it's only, only April. I have an idea here, don't yell at me. People won't like this idea, but it's, this idea will not be liked by many. How many are going to, how about going back to the drawing board, and looking at the numbers of, and across the board, all district staff, including people at the Ed Center, classified staff and teachers, reduction in pay by the 4% that never should have been offered in the first place, since the superintendent, financial department, legal department, and labor relations already knew we were going to have this budget issue going into the next year. This could actually save a large number of positions from the original layoffs as well.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, I'm Tina Merchant, I'm a school bus driver. I'm also a certified teacher, and I will never teach in San Diego Unified School District, because when I graduated, they cut 1,200 the year I graduated. So I'm still a proud bus driver, and I want to say, cutting 62 bus drivers means a minimum of 248 routes that will be cut next year. What schools will these cuts affect? Have you guys decided that? How many children will be told they cannot continue programs they've invested their educational process in? Do you realize those cuts will eliminate transportation for approximately 3,720 children? Many employees have children that attend our schools. If they have to leave the city to go elsewhere for work, they will be taking their children with them. Now, that affects the enrollment. Are you seeing the trickle-down effect? And the big question is, who's to blame for the mismanagement of funds? The district has to submit a budget and stick to it. How do you spend 124 million more than what you have, and then expect employees to fix the deficit?
Thank you. Thank you.
I am finished, and on a side note, I want to say that it's very disrespectful for you to put us this late on the agenda. Many of us in here have to be at work at 5 o'clock in the morning, and you have us, I'm in bed normally, sleeping right now.
Thank you.
Next time, please put us farther up on the agenda.
I'm Sally Kaufman, and I am proud to be a library technician at Pacific Beach Middle School, who, like all of my colleagues, single-handedly run a library program that saves the district millions of dollars. Superintendent Martin, Dr. Mike, and Mr. Beiser, I want to thank you for coming a few years ago to support me in creating a peace garden at PBMS. You've had the opportunity to see our well-maintained library space and the program it offers. The elimination of my position will negatively affect students, teachers, parents, and community members who, who benefit from our library program. Library cuts are fiscally irresponsible and not cost-effective. District library techs are well-trained and an important asset to this district. Not only do we account for the millions of dollars of district textbooks, we also facilitate lending resources from school to school, lowering expenditures. If library techs are cut, students will lose the one place on campus that provides equal access to a safe, well-maintained, and positive learning climate that provides support to meet their academic, social, emotional, and physical needs, and our library collection supports the diversity of our students.
Thank you.
Okay.
Hello, my name is Leslie Johnson, I'm with the Mental Health Resource Center, serving the highest-risk students of San Diego Unified School District. Our students experience homicidal and suicidal thoughts, have attempted suicide, engage in self-harming behaviors, and often psychiatrically hospitalized. Many struggle with substance abuse, and are at risk for human trafficking or gang involvement. All these students have experienced significant traumas and require the support of mental health clinicians. Our clinicians are highly skilled and trained to provide compassionate, evidence-based, and trauma-informed therapy. But the impact our clinicians have on our students is seen in the numbers. Since 2012, the day treatments alone have served close to 850 students who otherwise would be harming themselves, or others, or creating such a disruption at comp sites that other students' safety and education would be impacted. The therapy services provided by Mental Health Resource Center have also helped to decrease the amount of students requiring residential placement, which saves San Diego Unified approximately $135,000 per year, per student. Our clinicians make a difference in our students' lives, and they help also save hundreds of thousands of dollars. Don't approve these cuts.
Okay, Brian Loyce, Melinda Donner, Dana Ellis, Lisa Klemp, Diane Jones, Sarah Girardi.
My name is Brian Loyce, and I am speaking on behalf of some of the most vulnerable children in the district, and I am a licensed mental health clinician. At the Mental Health Resource Center, we are providing students with assessment, treatment, planning, psychotherapy, behavioral intervention, therapy degree habilitation, case planning, case management, and language psychoeducation, clinical consultation, and crisis intervention. We are serving, serving children with depression, anxiety, mood, and behavioral disorders, trauma, and psychosis. Our children are the ones with thoughts of, and acts of self-harm, including cutting and burning themselves due to emotional turmoil. Our students are the children who are thinking about suicide, and the teens who are completing suicide at alarming rates. Their mental health stands in the way of their ability to access their education. Most of the children we serve require educationally-related services on their IEP in order for our district to offer a free and appropriate public education, FAPE. Cuts to our department will severely impact our ability to provide our service. Vote no on the layoffs, vote no on work reductions, and please wait till May to revise and make informed decisions about this budget.
My name is Melinda Donner, and I am with the Mental Health Resource Center. A federal law called the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, or IDEA, requires that public schools create an IEP for every child receiving special education services. These IEPs require the district to provide mental health services to students as part of their legally binding IEP. If we lay off the proposed 17 mental health clinicians and the associated support staff, that equates to 425 students who are going to go unserved. This is more than concerning. It is irresponsible, dangerous, and will greatly and negatively impact the lives of children in our district, not to mention the many lawsuits that will follow when we are out of compliance with our IEPs. I implore you to vote no on layoffs, vote no on work reduction, work year reductions, and please wait for the May revise to make informed decisions about the budget. Thank you.
Good evening. Dana Ellis, president of the San Diego Schools Police Officers Association. Teaching employees to do right things takes a good manager. A manager that can do things right, but also do the right thing, is a leader. This instills confidence in employees that their leaders will guide them through the tough times. The district has shown it has managers, but does it have leaders? The district didn't lead and take the time to collaborate with its employee associations to try and jointly solve its fiscal difficulties it imposed. The district... The district's only plan at this time is to balance a budget on the back of its employees at the expense of student safety. There is no plan going forward for how the work gets accomplished once employee classifications are eliminated. I'm asking you, the Board of Education members, to stop being managers and become the leaders you should be.
Hello, my name is Lisa Klemp, and I'm with the Mental Health Resource Center. I want to highlight the need for mental health services and how it has grown. In 2012, we were providing outpatient therapy for 638 students. Last year, we provided therapy for 1,248 students. While our district enrollment may be dropping, our mental health needs are certainly rising. That is an increase of 100% in four years. The need is there. These students who have mental health services in their IEP will not disappear because of the firing of 20 mental health department professionals. That service will not be provided, and the district will be out of compliance and without a doubt be brought more due process cases. The district will be settling lawsuits more often. And, at the very worst, we could face the tragedy of a completed suicide or homicide. How will you explain the cutting of mental health if that were to occur? It's not a risk I think any of you are willing to take. It is irresponsible and is unacceptable. I urge you to reconsider.
Hello, my name is Diane Klein-Jones, and I work with the Mental Health Resource Center. The proposed number of cuts to our department include approximately 17 direct-service clinicians. Cutting 17 clinicians means approximately 425 children will go without any therapy services, services we are legally required to provide per their IEP. Approximately 425 hours of therapy per week where students will not have the opportunity to express warning signs when they are suicidal, being abused, bullied, hearing voices, contemplating hurting others, suffering due to lack of self-esteem, depression, and anxiety. Those one-on-one opportunities with a trained person these kids can trust can change the trajectory of their lives. Oftentimes, we are the only adults these kids can trust, and the only adults who are professionally trained in this district, to assist these children with these very serious and debilitating issues. We, our staff, are funded by Special Ed, Health, and Human Service Agency county contracts and by a grant, by price philanthropies. All of our employees have designated funding sources which drive the programs they support and we provide. We have $7 million in county contracts which fund 62 staff members that support all of San Diego Unified.
Thanks.
$2 million out of the 7 million helps to offset the district for the provision of day treatment services to students with IEPs that attend separate school site settings.
Okay, thank you, Diane, thank you.
Just lastly, we are willing, as a department, for, last, when I was here in February, I offered you guys, come, look at the departments where the budgets are being slashed, and look what the program, sit down with the manager, and look at their budgets. Well, now you guys are interested, I'm offering the Mental Health Resource Center, come to our department, sit with our manager, look at our budget, and see if you can help us find ways to reduce that's not going to economically, that's not going to impact the students.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sarah Girardi, I'm a mental health admin assistant. I've been providing clerical support at the day treatment level for 14 years. I could tell you countless stories of near-miss suicide and homicide attempts by students struggling with mental health issues that have been averted by the hard work of my deeply dedicated colleagues. It is clear to me that whomever proposed these cuts does not understand that special ed funding and contract funding are completely interconnected. The county contracts are intended to supplement the delivery of special ed services under a specific, highly effective service delivery model. Positions cannot simply be divided as contract versus special ed-funded. As anyone watching the news knows, we're in the midst of an extremely serious mental health crisis in this country. The MHRC is a model for how to successfully provide mandatory special ed services through a combination of funding sources. We've produced incredibly improved outcomes for our most at-risk population and have provided you hard data. These cuts will eviscerate the MHRC program. I beg you to reconsider these cuts.
Lindsay Peterson, Andrea Buzowski, Caroline Fogarty, Paul Quilke, Giftin Chung, Eleanor Saylor, Stephanie Moss.
Hello, my name is Andrea Buzowski, and I'm with the Mental Health Resource Center. As we've mentioned earlier, we're facing the threat of losing services for approximately 425 students. Perhaps you feel we could cover those cases with the existing therapists? For the 2015-2016 school year, we had 37 clinicians on the mental health intervention team alone, serving 1,248 students. Right now, the average caseload is 26 students per clinician. With the proposed cuts, the caseload would increase to 62. 62 students who require collaboration with teachers, parents, psychiatrists, behavior support, not to mention the weekly therapy services. We travel to different school sites, we respond when there is a crisis, we keep notes of our sessions, we complete assessments, and we plan for our therapy sessions. Managing 62 students is not feasible, it's not safe, it's not ethical, and it can't be done in San Diego Unified School District would be out of compliance. The cuts you have recommended would cripple the mental health department. Please reconsider these cuts and vote no on the layoffs. Thank you.
My name is Lindsay Peterson, and I'm a mental health admin aide. It is being proposed that three out of the four special ed-funded mental health admins be eliminated. You are expecting a four-person job to be managed by one person. This would leave our department without adequate support staff for our special ed services. The work of a mental health admin aide is highly specialized. The state requires detailed documentation on compliance, service delivery, and outcomes. This could not be done without the skills that have a mental health admin: to generate medical and private health coverage billing, to provide staffing info for our LEA funding, to comply with county requirements, to process referrals, to collect data, to ensure legal requirements and timelines are met. Our mental health admins have many hours trained in cultural competency, trauma-informed care, and in youth mental health first aid. These specialized skills take months of trainings and years of experience to master. These administrative duties will be impossible to manage by one person, and the unintended consequences of these cuts will be far-reaching and longstanding in regards to compliance. I urge you to reconsider these eliminations.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Stephanie Moss, and I'm with the Mental Health Resource Center. While many of my colleagues have made valid points regarding the value of our service, I want to take a moment to address something that seems to be overlooked when the district proposed these cuts. Our department is unique in that we are funded in various ways. While we have licensed mental health clinicians working in multiple settings, many are county-contracted. The strict regulations for county mental health dollars prohibit these clinicians from filling the gap that will result from these cuts. So when you look at numbers on paper comparing how many clinicians we have and how many you want to cut, we feel there's a significant misunderstanding. We urge you to vote no on the layoffs. Explore this matter further. Become educated on how our funding sources work and the limitations that exist. Surely, you would never make such proposals if you knew how it was going to devastate the provision of mental health services for our children. Thank you.
This is just a point of order about the agenda. I signed up, a couple of us signed up to talk about music, and somehow we ended up in this section. So I was just hoping that at some point we'll be able to talk about music.
I think that'll be non-agenda at the end of the meeting, yeah.
But I just wanted to make sure that my name gets in there because it's not.
Sure.
All right, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Heather Ponsika, Margarita Garcia Marrera, Serena Enrique, Joy Nakatari Dingman, Danielle Nack.
I'm Heather Ponsika, I'm a licensed mental health clinician. I want to address the impact on, of the cuts on the general education classroom if the special education students receiving their legally required mental health services are cut. When mental illness goes untreated, it will often manifest itself in a very behavioral way, as I'm sure you all know. Cutting these positions will not only affect those who lose the service, but certainly in the general education classrooms as well. You will see a ripple effect when the teacher does not have a mental health professional to consult with. You will see the ripple effect when the general education staff are asked to manage a mental health crisis. You will see the ripple effect when parents are calling the principal, filing complaints with the district concerned for the safety of their child. These cuts will leave many parents questioning the district's judgment and rethinking their child's safety and placement in our district. Less mental health supports will impact classroom safety. Please reconsider.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Margarita Garcia, and I'm a mental health assessor with the Mental Health Resource Center. And it has been proposed to lay off four lead licensed mental health clinicians. If I was to ask you, the board members, if you have an idea who they are and what they do, would you be able to tell me? I would like to tell you a little bit about what these people do. The leads, the leads bridge the gap between mental health laws and regulations and the special education law and regulations. They provide guidance and clinical supervision in the most critical cases in our district, and they are continuously called for crisis management. They organize and oversee service delivery for over 200 school sites, a very difficult task that will result, will result in lawsuits if it was mismanaged. They supervise clinicians at our day treatment programs where we treat students with the most severe mental health issues. As we know, a San Diego Unified School District student completed suicide. I urge you to reconsider the cuts and to, and to prevent this from happening. Please vote no on the layoffs.
Hi, my name is Joy Nakatari Dingman, I'm a licensed mental health clinician with the Mental Health Resource Center. My intention is to share with you how important a lead clinician is in our department. I ask you if you could please open your hearts and your minds to learning more about the Mental Health Resource Center. We provide the support for mental health services for the most at-risk youth in our district, providing safety and security on campuses. We prevent suicide and homicide on campuses. We work with the kids who have anxiety and depression. And our district has been blessed and fortunate enough not to experience a tragic event like Columbine. It has been proposed to lay off 20 mental health staff and three licensed mental health clinicians, leads. A lead clinician is important in helping provide safety and security for our campuses and to help intervene with crisis management. I had an experience recently with a student who wanted to kill himself. He wanted to kill other people. I directly contacted my lead supervisor, and I spoke with him, and I was able, we together were able to provide crisis management and support, contacting police, parents, providing safety for these campuses.
Thank you.
I ask you to please reconsider cuts to mental health.
Thank you.
Hello, I'd like to start with two points of information. One, LCAP goals were done.
Give us your name, please.
Serena Enrique.
Thank you, Serena.
LCAP goals were met with the current staff. Second point of information, I neither work for the mental health services or am I a school library tech. I am a unified employee. I'm speaking on behalf of these people because while the age of suicidal thoughts, suicidal actions, and suicide has declined in a time when bullying has become an issue so serious, our district has implemented policies, procedures, and programs to combat it. The mental health resource, that's where we can make cuts? This is a viable solution to the board? That's contradictory. After years of investment in the construction, refurbishing, remodeling of libraries, after the years and the money's invested in literacy materials, there should be no investment in the bodies that drive our students' largest literacy resource? Would you purchase a vehicle that you do not intend to drive? Our library techs were many hats, just like many classified do, because as you reduce staff, the work does not reduce.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Danielle Nack, I'm a licensed clinician with the Mental Health Resource Center. Tonight, I want to talk to you, just information, money, about the cost of residential treatment. Residential treatment placement for one student equals about $135,000 a year. That doesn't, it includes only the housing and the mental health support, not the education piece, which is additional. If you follow through with the cuts you're proposing, again, there's the 425 students that may not receive the preventative outpatient therapy that will help them to remain in their comprehensive school site, so they don't have to be in a residential treatment facility or higher facility. In July of 2011, there were as many as 37 students that were placed in residential treatment facilities at any month's time throughout that school year. Mental health services were acquired by the school district in 2012, and if you look at this year, 2017, we have 12 students currently placed in residential treatment. You can easily see the fiscal benefit of keeping mental health services in place for our valuable, vulnerable students. Please reconsider making cuts to this department. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Miriam, Irene Quinata, John Quinata, Sabrina Hanlon, Doreen Diaz-Pesta.
Sabrina Hanlon, Para-educator president. I'll be brief. I'm in support of my fellow chapters and asking you to not reduce. Margarita, I don't know if she remembers, she was actually my son's counselor when he was 11 years old, suffering from depression. She created a gentleman who is now a special ed tech for your school district who has compassion and understanding for the students. So I just hate the thought that we're going to lose these kind of people that are going to impact our children, who are impacting our future. Those people could be coming back and helping other students, which is what happened with my son. The loss of more police service is just going to be detrimental to our students. Already, the cuts that they've already received, it's going to hurt. Bus drivers, we need those bus drivers transporting our kids. The roads are dangerous, and, you know, I know as a parent, I had the child on the bus, I appreciated it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. I'm Irene Quinata, I work at Crawford High School, I'm the library tech there. I'm, for over 10 years, I've supported the staff and students alone in the library. Students, maybe 1,100, 1,200. I'm here today because I want you to know the person, not the library tech, that you have targeted to eliminate. I bring 19 years of experience, knowledge, and consistency to my community of teachers and my English-language learner students. Our students' programs keep getting eliminated. The newcomer center, now the Ola teachers, so the only consistent venue that my students have available to them to provide these valuable resources before school, I get there at 6:30 at lunchtime and after school, is me and the library. Students and I work together in student access to Power School to review grades, PowerPoint presentations, Word documents, we proofread and correct drafts of homework together, all the things that are not offered in class because teachers barely have enough time to cover the students' curriculum.
Thank you, thank you.
Please reconsider these votes. Please reconsider these votes.
Francine Maxwell, Kat Ortiz, Lance Wren, Rob Wilber, Michael Brea.
Francine Maxwell, currently, today, there's three resource teachers for the Ed Center being post in bid, and we should be at a hiring freeze. Why do we need three resource teachers here at the Ed Center? Second of all, you didn't start discussing the budget deficit until well after the election in 2016, so I'm confused at where you guys are calculating all of the talk about this. I also looked at the budget, and the textbook budget went up. We have kids that are running from this district. Our enrollment is extremely low, so why would the budget for books continue to rise? I'm very unclear about that. And there was a comment made about the fact that Bell is losing their library tech, and our children really need access to the library. So when we get these new books that are overpriced, who's going to put the barcode on them? Who's going to check them out and make sure that we get them back and we're not wasting money? Completely understand that we are moving away from hard textbooks, but we still need CDs to put into the computers because we have a vast surplus of that. So, in closing, look, look deep inside. Just one thing, just one thing tonight. Look deep inside and don't vote for this.
My name is Lance Wren. I am the president of Chapter 724, Operations Support Services, and I went to the LCAP meetings for a little while, and I expected to see the budget, and I expected to see line items on the budget. And at that, at those meetings, I was told, oh, this is not the venue for that, so I stopped going. I want to talk about the layoffs that we are seeing this time around. So, bus drivers, you're going to lay off bus drivers? Great. So you're going to take away opportunity for some of our lowest-income, most impacted students. Also, talking about lead, who does the lead? We got lead in our paint. You're going to get rid of 14 painters? Who removes the lead paint from our schools? Talking about lead in our water, we're going to get rid of some of our planner estimators? We're going to get rid of our planner estimators and inspectors? Those are the guys that go plan to get the lead pipes out of the pipe, out of the schools. We're going to do that? What about our sidewalks? We're talking about getting rid of all of our skilled grounds workers? We're going to be walking on asphalt, it is, that's uneven. We're talking about safety of our students with the jobs that you are eliminating this cut. We have a proposal. We sent it today. If you vote to not accept this, we will return to the table. So, I urge you, don't make this cut, give us more time.
Hello, I'm Kat Ortiz. I've been with the district since 1981. I have spent the last three school years at Riley New Dawn/Marcy, a specialized setting for students with social and emotional disabilities. Our program provides services to students whose behaviors are so severe they cannot be managed on a comprehensive school site. If you cut these, if these cuts are made, I predict our school will have, will be over-impacted because, number one, they will be over-impacted because the regular school sites will not be able to manage these students. Number two, we are already getting over-impacted and we're not even full. These therapists and workers, and you talk about bus drivers, I want to mention real quick our bus driver because they, I know they've talked about therapists, but the bus driver that we have is critically needed because he's at our site because he stays and takes these students that go off at the end of the day that normal sites would not handle.
Thanks, thank you.
And so, thank you.
Good evening, my name is Rob Wilber. I'm the Labor Relations Representative, proudly serving 2,800 paraeducators in San Diego Unified. By the district's current proposal, I will be losing many hundreds of those that I represent. If this board does not care about its employees, on behalf of all classified units, I'm asking you to care about our students. Where you are looking to cut is going to impact the safety of our students. It's been many years since any of us, it's been decades for most of us, since we had a civics class. Let me give you a refresher. The school board is voted in by the public. Therefore, you work for us. The superintendent works for you, not vice versa. You've got it backwards.
Thanks, Rob.
Good evening. My name is Michael Brea. I'm the Senior Labor Relations Representative with California School Employees Association, and these are the individuals that give me the inspiration to do the job I do every day, and I want to thank them for the job they do. Tonight, I was going to speak about the impacts of the proposed cuts to services on children, and I was going to speak on the district's budget. Unfortunately, this may be a surprise to some of the members in this room, but during this very meeting, district's lead council legally ordered me to cease and desist from dealing with the school board regarding the budget cuts. While I certainly disagree with district council's threat, and I believe it's indicative of the district once again acting on half-truths and assumptions before thoroughly reviewing the information, I guess we'll have to see how silence works. Anyone interested in my comments can watch the media tonight. Ms. Donovan, I'll work with CSEA Legal to assure you get a formal response promptly.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor and a second. Dr. Evans, did you want to speak to your motion?
Sure, yeah. Well, I'm directing my comments, mostly to the board, although I'm very aware that there is a very important audience here, but we're conducting a board meeting in public where we're supposed to converse with each other. We're all, all of us here, all the board members are very clear on the $124 million deficit. There's not, not a dispute about that, that's been combed through over and over. And, you know, there've been different things said about, well, we're spending more than we have, or how could you have spent $124 million more than what you have? Well, the reality is, we spent a certain amount last year, our costs for the next year have gone up, the amount of the revenue increase did not equal the amount of the cost, because obviously, we balanced the budget last year, and we balanced the budget every year. A lot of things have contributed to this. A big one is the state pension fund, in terms of which we have no control over, in terms of increasing the amount we have to pay. As President Barrera mentioned, also, the raise that we gave our employees, which was very much deserved. You know, healthcare costs go up, but the reality is, you know, we talk about finding money here or finding money there, over 90% of our budget is employees. And as Dr. Whitehurst Payne said, we have to reduce the number of employees and right-size the number of employees according to the enrollment of the district and according to the funds that we have. It was brought up about the number of students in a class, which is, you know, very nice for someone to have in their neighborhood school, but it's clearly, if you have two students in a class, that's not something we can afford. I remember when I first came on the board, there was an issue of how many students are riding on the bus, and it was, it was to try to save money on transportation. It was a very low minimum number of students riding on the bus, and so we increased that number because of the costs. So we have to look for solutions, and what I've heard very much is, you know, don't, don't cut this and don't cut that. I haven't heard a lot of solutions about what we should cut instead. The, one employee mentioned, well, you could, you know, take back the raise. We've never proposed that, we're not going to propose that in terms of a district-wide salary cut like we did do in the past. But, the reality is, we're elected here, and we have to do this hard job. If we don't approve the layoffs that we need to approve, we can't operate the district. And there's, and there's another thing about this whole situation of the May revise, okay? The amount, we have a $124 million deficit which we're still struggling to meet, and the May revise could come anywhere from $1 million to maybe $20 million. Let's say it was extravagant, 25 or 30. The reality is that the following year, we have a deficit of 50 million, which is actually going up now if we don't meet all of the commitments that we've made so far. And, and any ending balance that we have from that May revise would actually go to solving part of that problem the next year, so we're not facing massive layoffs again the next year. So here we are in this situation. This bargaining issue is, and I think it's important, we have a superintendent, and we've selected a bargaining team, and we're not going to bargain in public. I know that just before, just shortly before this board meeting, we received a proposal about negotiating, which didn't go just to the bargaining team, but also, also went to the board members. And again, I'm not going to bargain in public, but we have to realize that the layoffs that we're talking about today are not part of the original $124 million of cuts. This is Plan B, Plan C, D, E, F, X. I mean, when people were talking about how horrible it is to make these cuts, we totally agree with that. But the reality is, if we are able to negotiate agreements on certain things that we're in negotiation now, which I'm not going into great detail, we, many of these layoffs will be rescinded. But we have to follow a timeline. For the teachers, we had to follow a timeline of March 15th, and in terms of giving the initial notice, and then later on, the final notice. For the CSEA employees, we have to do 60 days, and so we are right at the line right here because, you know, May 1st, and this is April 25th, so we're the week ahead of time in terms of getting the 60-day notice. If our employees are not going to have a job, obviously, they deserve and need and are legally entitled to that notice. So, our negotiating team is still ready to act, but we need to follow through with the plans we have at this point. We can come back on, on May 11th, and if we have been able to negotiate some agreements, we can, at that very meeting in a couple of weeks, if the negotiation goes well, we can announce some of the rescissions of these layoffs. It doesn't have to take that long. But, you know, this is not a popular position, this is not, not an easy thing to do. I know every person here, every person on the board cares very much about education and children in spite of, you know, different comments that have been made, but we agree that these cuts we're talking about today are not acceptable. And so, I think we need, this is a point where we really need to draw a line in the sand. We don't want to keep doing this over year after year after year. We need to make the cuts, and we need to right-size. So, that's my position in terms of approving the staff recommendation for issuing the notices for these particular positions.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Evans. I'd like to speak to the motion. I agree with everything Dr. Evans just said. Where my disagreement is, is I believe that if, I believe that we need to give time, not a lot of time again. I would hope that we could get together tomorrow. We got a proposal today from CSEA covering all three units. I would hope that we can get together tomorrow and see if we can get to an agreement. But I believe it's important that we signal to you that we're not going to do this by putting a gun to your head. We can, we have before, and I'm confident that we will this time, get in a room together, figure this out, so that we don't have to make these cuts that we just heard about tonight, and that nobody in this room believes that the district can afford to make. But we have to work together. I would vote against this motion and come back with a counter-motion that we allow two weeks back to this May 11th meeting for negotiation to happen, that we pull, for now, these cuts off of the table, and allow negotiation to happen in a spirit where we're actually working together with shared values. And it doesn't have to wait till May 11th either, right? We can, we can get to an agreement tomorrow. Look, what we've heard some of today in this meeting tells us that if we're not working together, if we can't get ourselves to a point that we can listen to each other, respect each other, trust each other, and problem solve together, which has been the hallmark of this district, which is what has produced these graduation rates and these successful outcomes for kids. If we can't get ourselves to do that, we see what we deal with, with people who frankly don't believe in our kids. If we can't pull ourselves together as adults to find solutions to protect our kids, there's a world out there that we are leaving our kids vulnerable to, and we saw a little bit of that tonight. I believe in everybody in this room. I trust and respect the people in this room. The leaders of the bargaining units, the rank-and-file who work with our kids every day, our district team, our superintendent, and our board. I know many of you very well, known you for a long time. Some of you, I don't know very well. But I know what we believe in, in this district, and I know that we're capable of solving these problems together. So, I would oppose this motion, and I would, if this motion does not pass, I would come back with a counter-motion that we get to that bargaining table, we figure this out, we solve this problem, knowing full well that we have to continue to do that going forward into, into next year, but that we collectively demonstrate that we actually practice what we preach, that we care about our kids, that we believe in each other, and that we set an example for our kids, that we can work together to solve problems and not go into our corners and let, you know, bad things happen. So, that's, that's where I am right now on this, on the motion on the table.
I think Dr. Evans is absolutely right. We have to balance the budget. We have to be fiscally responsible. So then the question is, how do we get there? And I believe that this motion puts the layoffs in the front, and in the hopes that then later, we can negotiate and work together to find budget solutions to bring those people back that we need in our schools. And then Richard, then President Barrera's counterposition is, hold on, let's wait, let's first bargain in good faith, see what we can do, then explore and see what kinds of things we need to do to ensure we have a balanced budget. So I believe that both Dr. Evans and President Barrera, both will get us to a balanced budget. The question is the strategy and how. And I tend to favor discussion and communication and trying to work together first, and then let's see what we need to do in terms of layoffs. So I'm going to go ahead and oppose this motion- So I'm going to go ahead and oppose this motion with the caveat that we will have to sit down at the table and talk about how do we achieve a balanced budget and save all
Yeah, for me, having everybody in the room makes a difference. Having the conversation is important. Listening does matter, and it's the actions we take based upon what we hear and what we've experienced is what we're pursuing. So we know we've got a big problem. I wasn't here when it got started, but I've been here long enough to take responsibility. And I want to make sure that we move forward, that I move forward with responsibility, with wisdom, with the learning from our past experiences. And what I've been learning from my past experiences is that we do, when we do sit down, when we have that conversation, when I'm in your schools and in your shops and with you on the grounds, and I hear you, I see you, I understand what you're doing, I see the values of what you're doing, and I know we have a quality school. We have a school that is reaching outstanding heights. We have students who are graduating at a rate never foreboding, and it's higher than any other large urban district in the state of California, as well as lower dropout rates, which means we're taking care of all of our kids. And it's important that we continue to do that, and we can do that as we realize that we're all in it together. It's working together, having a conversation in the same room with transparency and accountability and with emotion. And as was mentioned a number of times tonight, you know, this is not just about the money. The budget is important, but I think, however, what's going to get us further down the road is if we start carrying the conversation to, it's about people. It's, education is a people-to-people business, and it's how we do that and how we work together to make that happen. And I do see the LCAP as the pathway. I do see sitting down and working together on the LCAP the way to go. It troubles me that someone will go to an LCAP meeting and then not see budgets or numbers and not feel like they're talking about the, especially key stakeholders, that the conversation doesn't address their critical needs and doesn't answer their questions. But for me, the big question is, how do we provide the services necessary to maintain compliance with the law, maintain safe schools and optimal learning environments, and continue to provide the high-quality support services that has enabled us to achieve the record-high graduation rates and the lowest dropout rates of the largest urban districts in the state? Can we do that with these cuts? I don't think so. Can we do that with these people and the services that they're providing? I don't think so. Can we rearrange the way in which people are providing services and how services are delivered? Can we be more efficient and more effective? I think so. But these are issues and questions that do require conversation and getting together. We have the issue of having a balanced budget. We are constrained by time, and in a certain way, we have certain, we have established rules and procedures and protocols that we need to follow, that they're set up in order to involve bargaining units with the administration, with the board, in a way to determine terms and conditions and wages of employees. So we have to, we have to balance the budget, and the question is, how do we get from here to there? And it's, how do we, how do we work together to find a solution, as was suggested by trustee advisor, that places the order of, in the right sequence? That may, we need to have the conversation before we arrive at a decision. And I heard Lance say, "Let's not make the cuts. Let's not make them now. Give us more time." And I take him at his word. I take this group as its word with the desire to arrive at a solution that we are all agreed on, that we are working together to do. Let's have that conversation. Let's make a decision. But I say, with President Barrera, let's have a little more time.
In the very beginning, the set of cuts that we're talking about tonight were not on the list as the way to go, because we do need, know that we need those, we need everybody. I think the one thing that's, that has me thinking tonight is what Lance said also, so it's interesting that you would say that. One of the things that I had, I was thinking that was that perhaps we could have another board meeting on Friday to look at it again before the end of the month, but that would not give staff enough time. So the question then comes down to, are we willing to trust Lance and others to come to the table and to work this out, as the president said? And I'm going to trust you to do that.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion on the table. With no further discussion, please vote.
So a no vote right now means that then President Barrera will have a counter-motion. A no vote now means President Barrera will then have a counter-motion.
Please vote. So my counter-motion is that we allow between now and May 11th for the parties to come together and develop solutions that alleviate these cuts. My ask of everybody in the room is, let's get to work on this tomorrow, and let's see if we can get this wrapped up as soon as we possibly can. So my motion is, we come back, if necessary, on May 11th, but hopefully, that's not going to be necessary. Hopefully, what we're coming back on, on May 11th is to approve an agreement that we've reached. That's my counter. Okay, please vote. Okay, all right. Thank you. Okay, we had one item pulled from the superintendent's consent agenda, and we had one speaker. Is that correct? On item I-35, Robert Loughton, if you're still here. Is Mr. Loughton still here?
Item 35 is a waste of money.
I'm sorry, could we just, please quiet down a little bit and allow Mr. Loughton to speak?
Okay, I'm Robert Loughton from LaRouche PAC. Item 35 is a waste of money. I'm asking the San Diego Unified School Board of Education to Google search YouTube, global warming, British for genocide. Carbon dioxide, CO2, is 4, 1,000ths of 1% of our atmosphere. Plants take CO2 and sunlight and water to produce sugars for the plant's growth. Oxygen is the plant's waste product. The process is called photosynthesis. Solar minimums created our planet's ice ages. Arctic ice is floating ice. When floating ice melts, the ocean water level is reduced. Most of the Antarctic ice is on land, and the ice is increasing. So once again, I'm asking the Board of Education and the people in the audience and the people that are watching this on your, on your Channel 3, Channel website, or internet website, or whatever it is, to Google search YouTube, global warming, British for genocide. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a motion on I-35?
So moved.
Do we have a second? Please vote.
Point of clarification, it says here the fiscal impact is none. It's just an extension on the status quo contract.
Please vote.
How do you spell that?
Okay, this meeting is adjourned, but I'm going to ask the board to, and the superintendent to reconvene in closed session.
Non-agenda public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, there is, yes. Vice President Advisor reminded me. Thank you. Wow. Oh, I'm sorry, we, yeah, all right, yeah. Okay. Yep.
And we stopped at 34, 32.
Okay, back to non-agenda public testimony. Valentina Hernandez, Katina Evans, Kathy Jolly, Phaedra Palau, Isabella Cherick, Joshua Nguyen, Kristen Stone.
And this is non-agenda public comment that we're continuing because we didn't have enough time at the beginning of the meeting.
If you're here, please come forward. You have a minute each. I'll keep calling names. Anne Marie Haney, Anna Bonatati, Lorraine Burley, Sabrina Hanlon, Rob Wilber, Leticia Okay, Kristi Williams, Kyle Raskone, Dana Ellis, who spoke, and Carlos Mejia, Howard Geyer, Eric Gonzalez, Mary Baker, Lynette Williams, Charles Lamandry, Christopher Wirick. If I called your name, please come up and address us. Yes, thank you.
Hello, good evening. I'm Eric Gonzalez, and I have two children in the Meremac cluster, and I'm not coming here from the position of fear or Islamophobia, as most of you call it, from personal experience, because I've served in the United States military for 22 years. Now, I'm speaking out against the curriculum-based lessons regarding the religion of Islam at one of my schools, at one of my children's school. First, I was never given the opportunity to give my permission for my child to attend those lessons. And it is my understanding that all, that the curriculum calls for all religions to be covered throughout this school year. In my case, that is not the case. If you want students to learn about Islam, then make it an elective, not a primary course topic. Secondly, if you truly say this, not about, if you say, "This is not about the religion of Islam, but primarily about anti-bullying," then make it about all students, not just one particular demographic group, because that's what's happening. The bullying of those of Christian faith continue to be our targets on and off campus.
Thank you.
Finally...
No, thank you very much.
Everything CARE, who you have aligned and partnered with, supports everything against the United States Constitution, so wake up.
Good evening. Mary Baker, representing Citizens for Quality Education, San Diego, here with several complaints about the new discriminatory anti-bullying policies crafted for a special group of students in the district. Number one, the biased reviewing and vetting of materials related to Muslim culture and history in media centers and classrooms, as though it's missing somehow. Number two, restorative justice approach to deal with bullying incidents like talking circles in lieu of mental health services, apparently. Three, the district establishing formal partnerships with CARE, the Council on American Islamic Relations, which is partially funded by the terror group Hamas. The series of professional development training related to awareness and advocacy for Muslim culture. Why single out Muslim culture? And five, Islamic religious practices and accommodations in schools. If the district is making these accommodations, then shouldn't they provide accommodations for kids of all religions? In the Times of San Diego, they report this, 33% are antisemitic incidents reported in the San Diego County in 2016 compared to the year prior.
Thank you.
I'm going to finish with this quote. "The ADL noted a spike in the incidents since November and a doubling in the amount of bullying, of vandalism at non-denominational K through 12 grade schools. You have a larger issue, and what are you doing for them?" Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Alice Kaiser, and I came to ask this board to immediately reverse your policy of compliance with Sharia law. Sharia law is not a religion. It is a theory by desperate, cruel men against women. We cannot support that type of action in our schools, in our cities, or in our nation. You have given your alliance to people that are against our own constitution. It is wrong. Sharia law is despicable and not acceptable in this country. You women especially should know that women's rights are very, very important to all of us. When you voted for this policy, it was terribly wrong, and you should reverse it immediately. You are working against our American Constitution, and that is wrong. You've given your loyalty to the enemy. CARE is an arm of terrorists.
Thank you.
And you should reconsider this policy and give the students the right to freedom of speech. If a student sees that it's wrong...
Thank you.
...then they should have the right and not be punished under the guise of bullying. Sharia law has nothing to do with bullying and spitting.
We're going to have to ask you to include your comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
I've had to chop my speech up pretty well to fit your guys' one-minute time constraints. My name's Christopher Wirick. I'm a resident of San Diego. I'm a taxpayer, a father, and a husband, and a very, very proud American. Over the years, I've had many titles. One of them I will not accept is infidel. There's been an argument over the years to keep religious beliefs out of school, especially any that happen to be associated with Judaism or Christianity. So at what point did you decide that it was okay to teach my children about Islam? If you're going to take a stance on any religion in school, then that stance needs to be firm against all religions. Your protective class reports from July 1st, 2016 to December 31st, 2016 accounted for 11, or states that there were seven incidences regarding religion, number four on the list accounting for 11% of those reports. If you further separate these incidences down into religious sects, then those numbers fall drastically. So how does your board justify spending our tax dollars on a program that is meant to educate our kids on the Muslim religion specifically, yet only accounts for a very, very small portion of the harassment reported? Have you, pardon me, it's the first time I've ever been up.
No, it's okay.
So I've seen your reports, and it amazes me that you've allowed CARE to come into our public schools and begin to implement pro-Islam curriculum. What's next, teaching them about the Five Pillars or the Conversion Prayer?
Okay, thank you very much.
Dude, I'm going to go. You're going to have to drag me out of here. Is that what you consider educating? How does your organization, like CARE, with ties to terrorists like Hamas, have an ear of this board?
Sir, we've got to ask you to conclude.
Yeah, whatever. How does, you actually allowing them to implement its propaganda and hate speech into our schools in an effort to brainwash the minds of the young? The Muslim and its followers have gracefully hidden their political agenda under the veil of religion. Yeah, I get it, you guys. You know what? You guys are hypocrites, and you guys should protect your children.
Gustav Gesch, DeeDee Romella, Victoria Hargrave, Tammy Coleman, Susan Bush, Elaine Sabeti, Lydia Grant, Celesta Ranisi, Colleen Cusack, Margarita Corallo Hidalgo, Sabrina Hanlon, Ali Leibom. Okay, go ahead, Sabrina.
Sorry. Do you want to take them in order? Because I'm...
No, 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 go ahead, no.
Okay, so I'm back about my passion, and my passion is my members, and these are from the board. So I'm talking about my noon duties again. You know, I can't let them go. So I found in your, I've been reading board policy, and I found in your policy that you actually do have an allocation formula for noon duties per size of schools. The smallest being a .25. The schools have only been given a .2. The schools have only been given a .2. All the schools, no matter what size they are. So I just briefly today looked at Zamorano. I went from A to Z. Zamorano has 1,194 kids. They have a breakfast program, which includes, in your policies, that they should get an additional hour if they're running a breakfast program. Zamorano qualifies for point, well, for seven hours a day of noon duty, according to your policy. So I looked at Adams. They're a smaller school, but they still qualify for 3.75.
Okay, thanks, Sabrina.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Lydia Grant. I live in San Diego County, and I'm very concerned about this implementing the Islamic Sharia law compliant policies. Sharia law has no regard for women. Sharia law treats women like dogs. Sharia law believes in mutilating women's female genitals. Sharia law is not something that should be mandatorily taught to our children. I just, I, this country needs, excuse me, this country needs to be united. We have been divided so much, and this is dividing us even more. Honest to God, God has been taken out of our schools. A lot of schools don't even say the pledge anymore, our allegiance to our country. And I don't want to see Islam coming into our schools.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And I appreciate the way you listen to all the speakers and not look at your computers and really pay attention to us, the people that put you in these positions.
Thank you.
My name is Tammy Coleman, and I am here as a representative of the Citizens for Quality Education. I am asking you to reconsider the policy that you have taken in regards to your new bullying policy. Students may be taught about religion in its historical context. Public schools may not teach religion and its tenants. We care about all students in this new anti-bullying policy, specifically crafted to protect Muslim students. It discriminates and may adversely affect the student body. We urgently recommend that the San Diego Unified School District retract all aspects of this new policy. The five complaints about this new policy are: the biased reviewing and vetting of the material related to the Muslim culture and the history in the media centers and the classrooms associated with this new policy; the restorative justice approach, the disciplinarian students which only serves to name and shame the individuals.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you. Alice Kaiser, Mia Briers, Abdi Ali, I'm sorry, Robert Lawton, John Steele, Lucia Nunez, Nam Young Horn, James Horn, Bob Cowell. Go ahead, Mr. Law.
This school board took educational funds and gave it to the Council on American Islamic Relations to pay for the imams that are going to teach sixth graders, you know, about Islam. Two of the major doctrines of Islam is that Jesus Christ, or Jesus of Nazareth, was not crucified, that's Surah 4, 157. And another tenet of Islam is that America is the great Satan, and Israel is the little Satan. And this is not, this is not something that you want to talk, teach sixth graders. I am also opposed to rabbis teaching the doctrines of Judaism to sixth graders.
Thank you.
And you need, you need to make cuts in the budget, and I would suggest that you stop giving educational funds to the Council on American Islamic Relations.
Thank you.
My name is Nam Young Horn. I am an American citizen. I always emphasize the importance and value of responsible quality education, including freedom, equality for all. Educating children should be your focus, not political or cultural indoctrination. You have a responsibility to do what is the best for the children, not to push an ideology that allows one group to bully others. Immigrants from many countries, I have to shorten this, so sorry. They come here, strive to assimilate, to participate with the mainstream America from the minute they arrive in America. They do not try to impose their cultures and their native laws and ideology on Americans.
Okay, thank you very much.
Islam teaches that American laws are meaningless. This is wrong.
Thank you. Thank you.
By partnering with CARE, you have taken side against those you are responsible to protect.
Please conclude. Thank you very much.
This is beyond shameful. And please, please think over.
My name is Bob Cowell. I'm from Murrieta, California. First of all, Mr. Biser, I've been to Israel as well. Walls do work. That little town you went to must be an anomaly, because I've been to Hebron, where shots were fired. I've been all over the place there. Those walls work. Before the wall, there were people killed by bus bombings. We bought Bus 19 to Temecula. It was blown up with innocent people in it. Afterwards, there were no bus bombings. Now, they just use swords and caterpillars and cars. But you're aligned with CARE. CARE is a terrorist organization. If you're aligned with CARE, and something happens, we're going to hold you personally responsible, and you're going to go to jail for this.
I am James Horn. I am a retired Foreign Service officer. During the 25 years I served overseas, I worked in intelligence, counterintelligence, counterterrorism, and national security. I spent 10 years working in Sharia-compliant Islamic countries, where I have personally whipped some of the most egregious human rights violations against women and non-Muslims. I have also experienced Islamic hatred directed at me and my colleagues. I know and I understand Islam very, very well. I also know, and I want to tell you, that the Council on American Islamic Relations has been identified by the Federal Bureau of Investigation as a criminal enterprise. Do you understand that you have partnership with a criminal enterprise with evil? Shame on you.
Okay, Lori Smith, Mohammed Magtayan, Fadumo Sofe, Lynn Booth, Mary Simpson, Kent Cassidy, Stephanie Savala Lemeroy, Magdalena Ruvalcaba, Donna Vaughn, Carrie Mundie. Please go ahead.
Hello, board. I'm Lynn Booth. I grew up in San Diego. I've attended the K through 12 schools, and now I have three grandchildren about ready to enter. And I'm very upset about hearing this proposed program for the Islamic instruction. We've been hearing all evening about cuts that we're encountering, and I'm asking you to cut this program before it even starts. It's going to require a lot of time on the part of teachers, a lot of teacher training, a lot of expense toward materials. It's a diversion of resources, and it's unnecessary because you already have policies regarding bullying, anti-bullying. We don't need it. And it's going to open the district to lawsuits. Do you know that the national focus is going to be here in San Diego? It's already starting. There's going to be a spotlight on you, and there are going to be groups coming here and getting involved in this whole situation. So I suggest that we quietly remove ourselves from this proposal. It's, I've looked on the website of the ACLU, and they have many things that say that this is ripe for a lawsuit.
Thank you.
We've listened to them for a long time. Let me just finish a couple of quotes from them.
Very quickly.
They say, "A public school curriculum, the inclusion of a religious program violates the Establishment Clause." You know the Establishment Clause.
Okay, thank you very much.
And this is taking too big a risk for our school district. We can't afford a lawsuit. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Mary Simpson, and I'm a parent at Horizon Christian Academy. And I thank you, board, for staying this long and listening to everyone's concerns. Although I'm passionate about a lot of things that have been spoken here, my main concern right now is, due to your budget crisis, you chose to sell our elementary campus to a housing development, which put a bunch of houses where our school is. So we had to transfer over all of our teachers and students from our elementary campus to our high school campus. Our high school principal is a former Crawford graduate. We have a wonderful set of teachers, and staff, and family, and children, and we are all being displaced because you've also chosen to sell our other camp, our high school campus, which holds our preschool through 12th grade, to help your budget crisis. We now have no home, and I'm appealing to you, Dr. Evans, because I believe you oversee our district. We have information that you are on the brink of closing some local Claremont schools, and we are asking for, to work with us, to possibly make available a campus for us to lease or purchase. We are all going to be displaced as of June. Teachers are going to lose their jobs. Students are so upset. Families are so upset, and we have a thriving school.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Stephanie Savala Lemeroy, and I go to Pacific Beach Middle School. Five years ago, I stood here asking the Board of Education at that time to not cut music in my elementary school, and they listened, and they made the right choice, and because of that, music was a part of my life. And I have to say now, the pink slips are not part of, are not part of the solution to this budget cut problem. For you, the pink slips might seem like the answer, but for us children, it's not. One of my teachers who got a pink slip is Mr. Don O'Donnell, who single-handedly manages both band and orchestra at my school, beginners, intermediate, and advanced. He takes pride in his work, and I love his class. There are so many teachers like him across the district making a difference in your children's lives. The pink slips are not the answer to the budget cut problem. I am here standing past, way past my bedtime, to tell you about the teachers that we will be losing if you go through the pink slips. Since when did money become more important than education? I think that if we work together, we can find a solution to this problem. I don't want to lose my school music program. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, board trustees and Superintendent Martin. My name is Magdalena Ruvalcaba, and I'm the principal at Coverly Elementary. For the last two years, Coverly has surpassed the district's projected enrollment. Two years ago, our actual enrollment was 10% higher than district projections. Last year, our enrollment was 14% higher. I can assure you that we will once again exceed the district projection for this September by at least 15%. This will put us at well over 200 students. As a result of our actual enrollment being higher than our projected enrollment the last two years, we have been faced with reorganizing classrooms and adding an additional teacher and classroom in October. We project needing two additional classrooms this coming September. I would also like to share our progress on S-Back. In ELA and math, we have increased 10% from 1415 to 1516. We have students that are thriving, happy, and engaged, and in just the last year, our community has received multiple grants. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you, guys, for staying and listening to us. My name is Nikki Wright, and I am a proud parent of two students at Coverly Elementary and also the PTA president for two years. We at Coverly are very passionate about the welfare of our children. I am here today to tell you about a win-win situation for both the children of Coverly and the children of Covod. On April 4th, district staff presented several preliminary offers to Covod. The first offer was to stay at Coverly with no additional classrooms. The second was to split their campus between Coverly and Lindbergh Schweitzer. And the third offer, a very generous one, was to offer an entire building on the campus of Kimbrough Elementary, which did not, not only had the classrooms Covod had requested, but an additional classroom as well. Covod addressed one of those alternatives here at the board meeting two weeks ago, the combined Coverly-Lindbergh offer. Covod stated they did not want their school split up. What Covod did not mention was the third preliminary offer received, an offer which gave them more than enough classrooms to house Covod's entire enrollment. The school site, Kimbrough Elementary, is a relatively new school site and is only seven miles from Coverly.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks for staying so late. My name is Carrie Mundie, and I'm a parent of two students at Coverly Elementary. It is extremely concerning to me that we are in this current position. As a parent, I want exactly what Coverly is providing, my child. They provide the basics such as math, reading, and writing, but they also provide Art Core, Project Lead the Way, and a state-of-the-art ICANN studio and GATE curriculum during instructional time, all which are essential to a well-rounded educational experience. These programs are driving the success at Coverly, but it seems to me like the board is okay with killing this incredible progress. You are considering removing two classrooms that are essential to our continued growth at Coverly, rooms used for education of our children during instructional hours. You will be restricting the growth of our school and dismissing the hard work of the dedicated staff, which will result in forcing our kids out of our neighborhood school. I say this because Facilities has looked at the actual numbers and resources. It has provided three legal options to Covod charter school that will not hamper the growth at Coverly. That is two more than most schools get. So again, it will be you that drives my family out of its neighborhood school. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Andrea Kennedy, and I'm a fourth and fifth grade teacher at Coverly Elementary. I'm the lead teacher of Project Lead the Way, a hands-on science program based on NGSS standards. School-wide, we have embraced design thinking, and in order to construct prototypes, we need alternative spaces. We have modeled the ICANN studio after places like the highly acclaimed Thinkabit lab at Qualcomm, where our students have access to it each and every day. Coverly's ICANN studio is where innovation happens. Project Lead the Way is new to elementary schools, but it is not new to San Diego Unified. In fact, our students are now in a cluster pathway from elementary school to high school, where they will grow up with Project Lead the Way, giving them college and career readiness in such fields as biomedical engineering and digital media. We want our students to have every opportunity to become critical thinkers, and our ICANN studio provides the equitable and accessible opportunity for each and every one of our students. This is not an empty room that can be used by our after-school robotics. All of our classes visit the lab daily. Our students are performing hands-on experiments. This room is important to all of us at Coverly.
Thank you.
My name is Vanessa Limone, and I'm a fourth grader at Coverly Elementary. Today, I'm here to talk about why the ICANN studio is important to me, the students next year, and hopefully many years to come. One reason why the ICANN studio is important to me is because it taught my class and I how to work in teams. Teamwork is important in life because you learn how to communicate with others and understand each other. While in the ICANN studio, my class teamed up in groups and built a robot. It took a lot of communication, but it was really fun. While communicating, I learned how my classmates think differently than me and taught me more. One of the things my classmates helped me with was correcting my mistakes when I made them. Students next year and in the future can benefit from the ICANN studio and Project Lead the Way by learning new things and communication skills as well. They can also expand their knowledge on many things that are beneficial. I'm so thankful that the ICANN studio is available during the school day, because I'd never be able to visit if it was just used for after-school robotics. This room is not just a room. It's a place where innovation, creativity, and design happen each and every day. Thank you.
Thank you. Good job.
Good evening. My name is Susan. My name is Susan Engelhardt and my daughter attends Coverly. As a parent, I am continuously asking myself, is my child developing the skills necessary for the career opportunities of the future? The Coverly ICANN studio is a critical part of the influential curriculum that teaches our students to become creative problem solvers, critical thinkers, and aligned with the STEM education initiative. The ICANN studio allows Coverly to lead the way by providing a hands-on learning lab that produces students who will be inspired to pursue engineering, science, and design educational paths. I know of very few San Diego Unified elementary schools that are incorporating innovation and design opportunities at the elementary school level. This is a primary reason why I decided to send my daughter to our neighborhood school. I watched Cavode presumptuously indicate that our ICANN studio could be used after school, which is not the case at all. Our teachers use this ICANN studio daily as it's built in every teacher's curriculum. I believe we need to be forward-thinking in our approach to education. The ICANN studio can accomplish that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Lisa Taylor. I am here tonight to speak to you about our wonderful neighborhood school and its amazing Art Core program. Coverly students have been fortunate to have the Art Core program on our neighborhood campus for the past 11 years. It's a comprehensive developmental curriculum which teaches art fundamentals by bringing process-oriented, hands-on art experiences to the campus. It is taught during instructional hours to each and every Coverly student as part of their core curriculum. These lessons also meet the California State Guidelines and all five visual arts content standards. The students are so excited when it's time for their Art Core lesson. Art is a place where no mistakes are made. It gives them a chance to develop individuality and self-esteem. At the end of the year open house, we have a school-wide art show. Each and every student has a piece of artwork displayed. You should see the pride on the kids' faces when they show the family their masterpiece. This program makes up a majority of the Coverly PTA's budget. One of the requirements from the Art Core program is having a dedicated classroom for the lessons and supplies. There's a pre-lesson setup and after-lesson cleanup. That would -- thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name is Ann McConville and I'm a teacher at Coverly Elementary School. I'm here to respond to Cavode Charter's suggestion at the April 4th meeting that the primetime office be repurposed as a teacher's lounge. At Coverly Elementary, the staff, parents, and students have been committed to supporting San Diego Unified's vision, 2020 of quality schools in every neighborhood. We've collaborated with our community to build a strong bond. Our primetime program is one of our strengths and has supported this endeavor to have our facility meet the needs of our neighborhood. The primetime extended day program provides 60% of our Coverly students with a physically and emotionally safe environment. This program has been impacted by the presence of Cavode sharing our campus. Ms. Amberz, our parents and students deserve to have an area worthy of quality education that goes beyond their daily classroom. It is also important that she has a place for confidential meetings with parents and a secure place to lock up iPads when they're not being utilized. I urge you to think about the impact of this program, our families, our community. Deny Cavode our classrooms. They've been given viable options. Thank you.
My name is Richard Martinez. I am the parent of a kindergartner at Coverly Elementary. Recently, you were approached by the charter school who shares a physical site with Coverly to expand by annexing some of Coverly's facilities. They cite their growth and expansion and I'm all for educational opportunities. However, Coverly is growing as well. In fact, data from the U.S. Census Bureau shows that more kids are coming into our area. Coverly draws most of its students from Census Track 93.06. 2011 estimates show approximately 271 kids aged 5 to 9 are in this area. In 2015, this demographic increased to 291. Not all these kids attend Coverly as they're up for one of the two parochial schools in our immediate area, but as you can see, this is changing as they see the gains that our school have made. In fact, the district's own data shows that Coverly is drawing more and more from the local area. Additionally, this is an older neighborhood with a shifting demographic as many of longtime residents pass on. The median age shifted down from 34.1 years down to 32.3 years, moving into more than 2,500 housing units in our area, including housing, family residences, and apartments. Coverly will need room to grow. I just want to thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Olga Cosio and I'm a teacher at Coverly Elementary. On the board meeting on April 4th, 2017, Cavode spoke to the Board about extra classrooms at Coverly that were unused for a classroom instruction. They claimed that one of the classrooms is currently used as a staff lounge and could be given up for Cavode to have an extra classroom. Coverly has already been impacted by Cavode's growth and Coverly is currently growing in attendance. According to STEA Contract 11.3.1, the district shall provide a safe and sanitary condition currently operational lunchrooms, restrooms, lavatories, and lounge facilities, which are not used by students. At least one room shall be for use as a staff lounge. In 2015, Cavode was given a classroom that Coverly used as a designated staff lounge. The staff lounge was relocated to a room that is currently used as a bookroom, so the designated room currently called the staff lounge only occupies 25% of the room. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm Amy Redding. As Chair of the Kearney Neighborhood of Schools, I could not be prouder of Coverly for its amazing growth and the hard work that went into it. The Coverly community has grown its enrollment beyond all expectations because of its strong PTA, its parents, its hard-working principal, and its devoted teachers. They are building what you have asked, a quality neighborhood school worthy of our children. The very least you the school board can do to honor their commitment and success is to do everything in your power to facilitate the continued growth. This means giving Coverly the ability to expand its programs and its space. I would also stress that the district and Board have made Cavode a fair and legal offer. They have been given choices which is more than Coverly has been afforded. Cavode was offered three options, including a site that would be able to host all their students. Their administrators have made a choice to divide their families, not you. Finally, in light of the $124 million budget crisis, every time you lose a student because of this co-location, you lose more than $7,000 and that's a bad financial decision.
Thanks, Amy. Thank you, Coverly folks. Anon Imus, Michelle Huffman, Brittany McKnight, Wayne Simnit, Paul Quilke, Gitfun Chung, Eleanor Saylor, and Grace Desert.
Hi, I'm Gitfun Chung. Thanks for not forgetting about me. I'm a parent at La Jolla High School. We're against the decision to eliminate half of the district's elementary school music programs for the coming year. We ask everyone in the room, well, everyone who's left, to write to Governor Brown and your state rep and urge them to increase funding for education. California is one of the lowest-ranked states in the nation in per pupil funding. Okay, so back to San Diego Unified. Since the seniority of the average elementary school music teacher in this district is higher than the average seniority for the secondary music teacher, you're going to see displaced elementary teachers forced into high school and middle school positions. Some of these teachers have only been teaching, say, one instrument on a wheel program for decades and now they'll have to teach diverse things like marching band, orchestra, jazz band, and choir. Some of these teachers won't be able to manage these new responsibilities. Why would someone who's been teaching flute for 20 years know best practices for high school jazz band? It's just a recipe for failure.
Thank you.
I'm Eleanor Saylor, a student at La Jolla High School, and I'm also talking about music. The district has many PE marching band programs which require music teachers to also have a PE credential. Many of these teachers are being laid off with no available replacements with the same credentials and without a teacher with the right certification, the class will disappear. And how about equity? How do you decide which elementary schools lose their music programs? With all but two high schools in the entire district losing at least one music teacher to layoffs, it seems logical to eliminate elementary music in the clusters that are most negatively affected. And then the clusters who get lucky and have teachers with higher seniority would likely be spared the loss of their elementary programs, but the others are out of luck. This does not align with the district's Vision 2020. Cutting VAPA programs at some schools will cause many local students to attend other schools. How is this equitable? Coming from a school where it took two decades to recover after losing its music program, I think that it's highly unlikely all of this negativity will be reversed by 2020. Recently, funds in the budget have increased for textbooks and for displaced principals. We humbly ask you to look there instead of cutting arts. Keep the music alive. Thank you.
I know it's late and I'm glad you called me here. Yeah, first I have a novel solution.
Can you give us your name, please?
Balanced budget. My name is Anon Imus.
Thank you.
Okay. And it would be to top-down, I just got this idea, and ask everybody, all the teachers, all the administrators, starting with the superintendent, all of you, all administrators, you know, would you be, like, send out a flyer and say, who's in favor of saying, oh, we're going to sacrifice 1% of my paycheck to save all their jobs and services and that would, how far would that go? Sort of like maybe kick that around. I know it's kind of novel. Anyway, yeah, all the people that stood up here, I just want to repeat, basically the Islamic, you know, intimidation, they're not the ones really intimidated. I think that we, maybe possibly some of you might be intimidated and please don't let that happen.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, well, basically, that's it. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So I signed up online and I haven't heard my name called yet and I've been waiting here for the entire night. May I present to the Board?
Yes, please.
Good evening. My name is Joshua Nguyen and I have recently participated in the Middle School Honors Orchestra this year. It was at the same concert that Mr. John O'Donnell was commended for his strong commitment to teaching music, great discipline, practice, and determination. He inspires students to continue their musical interest by providing students with numerous opportunities to learn and provide a love for music. For these reasons, he was awarded the David Paul Shuckman Memorial Award for Music Teacher of the Year. It was also at this very concert that the superintendent and Board of Trustees expressed their commitment to making sure that music and art is alive and well within our district because they are the key to unlocking the genius in our students in a robust, balanced, beautiful, broad, and challenging curriculum. Furthermore, it was stated that the Board unanimously voted to pass a strategic art plan with the vision to create and support the best music program in the nation. Board Trustees continue to say that even in these challenging times, they will still work to achieve the vision. It was further said that schools need to be more than just math and English. It has to be about the arts, something to channel artistic energy to produce a well-rounded education for all students. That night, my parents and I were proud, were so proud to be part of a district that truly supports my love for music and understands how music helps me achieve my academic potential. I not only feel supported by my teacher, Mr. O'Donnell, but by my superintendent and my Board of Trustees. Unfortunately, my pride quickly turned to confusion. If the superintendent and the Board of Trustees are truly committed to the arts and is working hard to keep music and art alive, not just in their hearts, but in their actions and the decisions they make every day, as was clearly stated the night of the concert, then I do not understand why Mr. O'Donnell and many other music teachers in the district received a pink slip. Is that part of the strategic art plan that was passed in the fall? Is that helping to ensure that music is, music and art is alive and well in our schools to create a well-rounded education? Is that part of the district's plan beyond all the politics and all the other issues to ensure that our music program will continue? How is music and art preserved in our schools if the district is laying off the most valuable and influential resources that students like me have, our music teachers? They are vital to our music program. Mr. O'Donnell is a vital part to our music program at Pacific Beach Middle School as he brings cultural diversity and awareness into our study of music. How can students keep the beat going without the heart of our program? Please keep our music and art alive, not just in your hearts, but in your action and decision. Please rescind the pink slips given to Mr. O'Donnell and all of our music teachers.
Good job. Thank you. Okay, I'll ask the Board to convene to close session and the superintendent.